Please rise to the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Boss. Pippi F.
Present.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Present.
Frye.
Present.
Schroller.
Here.
Drum.
Present.
Barnes.
Here.
We have a forum. All right. Darlene has some amendments that she wanted to the meeting on June 10th. Does anyone else have amendments to June 10th? I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
Move to approve the minutes of regular meeting June 10th, 2019 with amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. The next are the special meetings amendments.
Move to approve meeting and special meeting June 17th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Just another reminder that for decorum reasons, please, if you would like to speak, address the chair and wait to be recognized and try to speed our meetings up a little bit. All right, with that being said, the first item is public comments. If you're not on the agenda, you're welcome to come to the podium and share for up to five minutes. Give your name, your ward, and your address. All right. The next item is business and discussion items. Ellen, you're up first.
Yeah, Jenny just showed up and she did one.
Oh, wait. Did you want to speak in public comments?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we're fast tonight, okay.
She's welcome.
Thanks, Ellen. You're up. Jenny?
My name is Jenny Shell and I live at 1236 11th Road. And I cannot get to the ditch. Weed eat it, nothing. I was, before the city came in and tried to deepen the ditch and it was not corrected right because there was a gas line underneath it. And the city planted grass. And we've had to call a couple of years ago to say, stop planting grass because we can't get to the ditch. And it's getting worse because it's eroding, there's rocks, and it looks like crap. And I don't feel, it's $100 to have somebody come weed eat it. And something needs to be done with it.
This is an interesting situation because we did change the ditch when we tried, attempted drainage. Well, we did make some drainage improvements. We didn't correct the whole problem, but we did make drainage improvements. And we did plant that madder grass, if you remember. I can't remember, that was supposed to hold things in place. But I, you know, I spoke with Austin briefly and said, you know, couldn't the city just round up that area, you know, once a year? And that way, what we have created on her property is resolved. How do you guys feel about that?
I think that would just cause more erosion if we round up it though, because then the dirt, the grass or whatever is holding there now, which is erode and we just end up with more rock.
Well, I think it, is the grass around the rock, I know we...
It's all, well, I have pictures here.
I run by there in the mornings, so I know about it.
Yeah. And it's just, I mean, even on the side to mow, it's starting to, I can't even get that close to it and the rock's just washing and washing it, making there's big...
Todd, there is rock there and grass. Do we still need the grass there?
It looks like a rock bottom stream is what it looks like.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we still need the grass there?
I'd say if the grass that's there helps maintain whatever topsoil is there, but yeah, it's tall. You can't, I could see how a person can't get to it with a mower. But I think it does help.
Or even meeding, I'm gonna break my leg.
It'd be a lot of work with a weed eater.
That's, I'm more scared of breaking my leg because it's so uneven and there's where the water's, there's ruts and everything else.
The only thing I could see would be if we rip wrapped the whole thing, because then we could spray it, but the rocks would hold the topsoil.
Okay. I think this is a situation where the council or our attempt to correct it hindered the homeowner from maintaining her property. So can we look into rip wrap to do what Todd said?
Rip wrap, yeah.
And you know what we mean by rip wrap, where it's kind of like it's kind of like an even rock and then that would be sprayed so it wouldn't be tall, but it would, all the dirt that is there wouldn't go away.
Yep. No, that's just because it...
You're okay with that?
Yeah, just as long as it looks better than it does, because I'm the only one on 11th Road that is, I can't...
Affected by our drainage improvements?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
If we created a problem, how about we have an expert decide how to do this rather than think, well, maybe rip wrap. Maybe there's an expert that could do this and do it right the first time so it doesn't come up again.
Well, I hate to say this, but we did have an engineer design the improvement. So when you say an expert, who are you...
If his improvement didn't work, maybe he could come up with something else and fix what he didn't get right the first time.
I guess we could check with the engineer.
From my understanding is bloomers were not able to dig deep enough because they didn't know there was a gas line right there. So that's why it never was fixed correctly.
And they figured they'd just be digging more into the rock and then there's no soil there. So it was kind of, I remember, Kevin, were you on council when they did that the first time? Because yeah, they put down a little bit of that netting and things, but it wasn't enough. And it was the time of year when there was lots of rain, it wouldn't hold.
And obviously you got a lot more...
You would take a lot of soil.
Yeah, as much rock as there is there. I mean, you'd have to put dump trucks of soil in there to...
Yeah. And then you would be raising the ditch, which is a problem.
And causing more drainage problems.
And then if you got a big gully wash, it's still gonna take, peel all that soil down to the rock.
Well, in response to what Terry said, we'll just pass it by the engineer and say, what do you think?
As long as they don't try to charge us for it.
Well, yes. And then as long as they say that would solve the problem, can Austin go ahead and do that?
Yeah, the engineer's suggestion apparently didn't work.
Well, again, I don't think we got the angle we wanted on the ditch because of the gas line. And I just want to solve the problem. We still have drainage problems on 11th Road that we're gonna have to deal with when we redo 11th Road. I just want to get it so that Jenny can have her yard area or the ditch in front of her yard fixed by the city. So...
Well, I'm sure the engineer will come up with something that would definitely fix it.
So do you want to pay an engineer to go out there and look at it?
It was his job to begin with.
But it's been two years. There's no way he's just gonna be out of the goodness of his heart, I don't think.
This was the thing that we followed his instructions and then it didn't work. Then the engineering part of it failed. He should come back and fix what was wrong the first time.
Well, why don't we ask him if he'll go take a look and if he's gonna turn to some...
Good idea.
And see if that would fix the problem.
And get it done right the first time instead of doing it again and again.
Right. Again, I'm just gonna emphasize that our 11th Road drainage problem is not solved and we will have to do some improvements when we finally do the road, so...
Got way too much concrete and roof coming down for what we've got there.
So Austin will look into it, check with the engineer, hopefully get it replaced before, so you don't have to move.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Jenny.
Thanks, Jane.
All right, you're back up, Ellen. Thank you for being gracious.
Sure. Well, I just wanted to give you an update since I was here last. Last time that I met with you and you were kind enough to take P for D on with some support, I talked about the very first thing I would do would be to write an application to Network Kansas.
Excuse me, just a minute. Can we shut that off? I can't hardly hear her. Or turn it down? Did you turn it up because I was hot?
Yes.
Okay. Moderation. And now I can't hear you. I'm in trouble.
You're winning for losing.
Sorry, sorry, Ellen. I just wanted to hear what you had to say.
So I had promised that I would fill out a Network Kansas application in hopes that we could win that. There was a lot of competition for it, but it would bring some extra resources to the city as well as to the whole county if we could win it. Well, I went to McPherson with Michelle Weitzel and Laura Musel as part of that application process. And there was quite a few people in that room. There was probably 15 people in the room. And so we were told probably only four would get an application that was approved. And it was a very elite program. So those four were chosen. Unfortunately, we were not one of them. But they told us that our application was very impressive and that they would like for us to apply next year. And so I feel like since they didn't get it to us this year, that we'll probably, hopefully be first in line for next year. So we have a good chance of trying for that again. In your package, you probably saw incentives for the county. Those couple of pages are different programs in the state and as well as our city and our county that people who are going into business or starting something up new can apply for. And I brought that to the table as something that we can put up on our website, the county website, city websites, and chamber websites, so that people can find that information and it could be helpful. That's what I presented it to our, the first meeting I went to with the finance committee. I was asked to come back again and then present another list and that would include things for how the city could grow. And that's what you have in your hand tonight. It's ways that Marysville can grow. Now, I realize that you're waiting on those case state studies and so you might, we just might want to wait for discussion on that, those two full pages, because I know that you're probably going to need to see how all of that shakes out. I would recommend doing the free things first, especially things that we can put up on our websites and things that we can do quickly to just help businesses get going. Mayor Grund encouraged me to come tonight as you're discussing your next year's budget. And so I'd like to update you on what I've been doing in the whole county so that you can see those type of things could possibly apply to Marysville as well. I've had now about three and a half years of working in this county, networking with different state officials and working with the North Central Regional Planning Commission. And I would like to say I'm a leader in that situation because I am the vice president now on that board. And so I feel like I have a lot of, a lot of good relationships that help me understand the resources that I can bring this area. I know that economic development is not an easy job. I know that we've had four people in our chamber position in the last two years. And so I feel like it takes someone who just can really see to a long-term vision and work with a lot of different people and be very patient to see things come to fruition because they can take a long time. Some of the latest things that we've done that I've really felt like have benefited the county is in Frankfurt, we won a $300,000 grant to put in infrastructure for their housing. We plan to apply for that again. It's called the MIH grant. And so that way we can put housing on it this time instead of just infrastructure. And I feel like that's a grant that would go well also in Marysville. This last month, Partnership for Growth was able to get $300,000 worth of pledges and tax credits. And that's for our project in Summerfield. And this project in Summerfield, to me, is really exciting because it will actually bring people into the county. When you bring people into the county, then of course you're bringing in more people to bear that tax burden and more people to pay taxes, which helps everybody. And so we have a lot of neat relationships developed with different networks that will work with veterans who can come up to Summerfield and live up there in inexpensive housing. And they would work in a tower farm that we're setting up in the former school. I'm experienced working with brownfields. I've been doing that with Blue Rapids now this past year. It's been really exciting to see that they have put seven buildings up into their brownfield program. And those buildings are being looked at right now to figure out what the next steps need to be. Do they need to be renovated or do they need to be pulled down? And if we pull them down, what grant would work best to renovate that area? And of course, one thing that I love to remember is our job site, because I constantly am working with people to find jobs. And Marysville, of course, is the place where most people are employed. So I actually work a lot with people getting employed here in Marysville. So I just wanted to say too, that the work that was done through your mayor and I believe Darlene and maybe it was Diane, did you three walk around the city and find out who had filled out that survey?
Well, we went to specific addresses that we were required to do because that's what the criteria is. You have to go to specific addresses. But yes, that's what we did.
I think that's remarkable because now that the city has qualified for that grant, it's gonna open up a lot more money for the city. And I just want to say that they did a remarkable job finishing that out and making sure that they got that finished. And so I just want to say as an economic developer, way to go, guys. That was incredible. So I hope you guys have thanked them too, because that was super. But I'm excited because I think that that community grant can really be maximized in the city. And it can also be used in the county. And I think that we could even get some partnerships going between the county and the cities and have some money working together, possibly on roads. But I'd like to research that and see what we could do. So you have a lot of case state studies coming up. You're gonna need to know resources and ideas of how to implement some of those ideas. So I would hope that I could be a help with that.
I did ask Ellen to come today and I did stop by and talk to her briefly this afternoon. And after our conversation, it made me prompt to go look at the CDB website on the Kansas Department of Commerce. And it said that on community facilities, which would be the fire station, for cities under less than 5,000 people, we have up to $600,000 available for CDBG. So that's exciting. And then I also looked at some of the grants that were on community facilities that were approved this year. And there are seven street projects. So I am hoping that as soon as we get our fire station done and possibly the drainage, unless we decide possibly doing streets, i.e. 11th Road, 12th Road, and Keystone, preempts the drain. So it would say that we could afford the drainage study and go ahead and possibly improve those roads. But that's a big discussion down the road. But out of the 21 community facility awards, seven of them were streets, two were fire stations, and one was a fire truck, which I didn't know we could do fire trucks. So I am really excited to think that, and you know, all the criteria here that they go through to figure out what the community match is and a rating, who gets the monies. I think it's a huge opportunity. So Ellen is the one that suggested I go take another look at these community facilities. So it made me even more excited about what we have in store and how we can use it. You know, when I talked to her, my question is, right now, who does the city contact if a new business wants to come here? I mean, I want to know what you guys' opinion is. Is it Ellen? Is that the role she plays? Because I'm not sure her role in the city has been defined. And I have gone to their board meetings. I think she is doing a lot of work. I think she's learned a lot in the last three and a half years, has a lot more connections. And I think we do need somebody to be in that role, to be the first go-to person. And I don't think we have funded her to fulfill that role. You know, when I look, and we only gave her a thousand, or the, I'm sorry, Marshall County Partnership for Growth, we gave them $1,000 last year. But if she even brings one grant opportunity to fruition, I mean, it's a win-win for our city. So when you look at it on the chamber, we give them $8,000 a year to run the tourism center. And we actually contributed $15,000 a year for Main Street. So when you look at for Marshall County Partnership for Growth, we give them $1,000. And if we want her to have that role, then we probably need to step up and fund her more substantially. And I'm not, I'm just throwing that out. I think that what I see in the city is I would like these incentives that she has available utilized to the max. And I talked to her briefly and said, you know, for this to go on our website, I would want more information. I want to know if it's a business or if it's a residence or who can utilize this money and for what criteria. But I think that, you know, to not have the, we need to have this on our website. I just think there needs to be more information so it's more usable. But I perceive as saying it's important to have someone there who can present those incentives to the people as well as to communicate to us all grant options we have possible. Those are my feelings. Tell me, if it's not Ellen, who is our, who do new businesses, do you believe they go to? If you're a new business interested in coming to Marysville, who do you believe they go to?
Probably they would call either the city or the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Those are, you know, listed phone numbers.
Right. But do we want it to be an economic development person who will know what incentives we have, know how to sell our city? I think, I think the chamber, when you know, when Jennifer Duffy was chamber director, she was really going to pursue economic development more. But now that Jennifer has left and is pursuing other plans, you know, I think we do need an economic development person to take those calls, encourage people, to give them up, tell them about our city, tell them about all these incentives. And I don't think I want city hall staff spending their time doing that. And if you guys agree that, you know, I think she's a vital part in new businesses and I, you know, we have, we can discuss it at the budget workshop and talk about funding. But you guys have questions for Ellen, like specific, about anything that she's presented?
I would like to say that the new business that came in with the Ford was, because I called over to Seneca, Honeyman Ford, and I said, you know, there's a Ford dealership here in Marysville that the owner's retiring and they would like to see if anyone would like to buy it. And he said, I will come by and take a look. And he did. And at that point, the property did not work out for him. But because I planted the seed and I said, we would love for you to come to Marysville, we don't have this dealership any longer. He went and bought property along 36 and now we have Honeyman Ford here. So everybody knew the situation was here and it was open. But I tend to be the only person who will pick up the phone and recruit and ask people to come here. And one thing that I just, I guess I can share too, is it takes someone that has a little bit of experience to do some of the hard things. One of the hardest things that I've done is start this grocery store in Blue Rapids. Just so you see the complexity, I'm dealing with three lawyers, two banks, an underwriter, four contracts, and two land sales. And not everybody wants to deal with that kind of complex stuff. Sometimes I say, whoa, I don't even want to do this. But to me, it's worth it because I care about Blue Rapids and I want to see the grocery store back. So I'm just saying, you want to have someone who has a lot of passion about it, because this is not an easy job. And it takes someone who's gonna be able to see the really big picture to do some of this. And I'm happy to do it. And I'm really happy to see the support that I've had from Marysville this past year. It's meant a lot.
One last thing that they discussed at a board meeting was about their business park out there. And, you know, I said, what we really need to do is if you have a business that's wanting to come in, we need to work up numbers for what the street, what the curb and gutter is and what the utilities are, so we know right now what that cost is. And then figure out how we can cost share that between the parties that are involved. So I think that's important, that Austin work up those numbers so we know what number we're looking at for the business park. In case they have a business come, we at least have that step done. Do you guys agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, the planning zoning commission is also looking at property around the airport.
That we initially, do you want to discuss that now?
Well, it's just in the discussion stages and research.
That was the industrial park. Remember, they were gonna put it on airport property and then the people decided that their neighbors kind of petitioned and it didn't come to fruition. But the planning and zoning wanted us to reconsider that. Are they gonna bring something to us?
I think so.
Okay. So that's another...
And I think the main concern with that is with larger trucks wanting to be close to the highway, the business park property we have is right off the highway. So that's...
You're gonna say that with all the truck traffic we have on North Street?
Yeah.
I just have to say that. Of course, you'd add to it, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. Like I said, I'd be happy to have these posted on the website. I just think we need more details so it's a more usable document to somebody inquiring.
Sure. I'm just making it into a list.
Yeah. It's a good list, if you can just do more.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Ellen. Thanks for your work. All right. Oh, you know what, Ellen? I had one other question. At a board meeting I went to once, you guys were talking about independent living. Is that, do you know where that's gone? And if anywhere?
Well, over by Keystone, that neighborhood, that is still an option.
Okay.
That is...
So is there anything we as a city need to do to pursue that or follow up or are you doing all that?
I am doing that, but I think that if the city showed interest that they're wanting that to happen, then the developer will get on the ball.
Okay.
Yeah. Right now, because there really isn't any movement from our side, he's kind of hanging back. So I think it would be great.
Is that Keystone and 11th Terrace or where is that being discussed possibly?
Between 11th Terrace and 12th Road.
Along Keystone?
Along Keystone.
I've had people from my ward ask me what I knew about a possible apartment complex going in out there. And I told them, they must be hearing crazy rumors. This must be the source of the crazy rumors.
Well, this wasn't discussed other than a board meeting.
Well, they asked what city council. I mean, people don't know necessarily where things are coming from, but they asked what I knew about it as a councilman and I said, I know nothing of it. So this must be the...
Probably, but it'd be more like duplex or single housing.
Is it on the gravel, would it be on the gravel section of Keystone?
Well, that's all to be determined.
But that's not current state limits, right?
Some of it is paved already around there that we looked at as the best site.
The south side of that road is city limit.
Right. But the north side isn't.
And I don't, I think it's the south side they're looking at.
Yeah, but I'm loath to say we should put more out there when we can't support the infrastructure we already have out there.
Well, maybe that would be an impetus for us getting the infrastructure in.
Might be some cart ahead of the horse action going on now.
No, well...
I'm just saying.
Just trying to have the discussions.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just let us know if we need to have discussions, okay, Ellen?
I know why. I wondered where this comes from.
All right. Kathy, you're up. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. I do have some notes typed up that I'm gonna present tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for not getting them sooner. Mayor Grund and members of the council, I want to just tell you what's been going on at the pool. We started lap swim on May 13th and we've been averaging participants daily from 16 to 26. Depending on the day, like last Friday when it was thundering and lightning, I actually had three show up for 15 minutes and I had to call them out. Lap swim goes from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM. Opening day, we had participants of a total of 415 patrons. 28 were pass holders, 380 were paid admissions, two punch card patrons, and five under four-year-olds. And we keep track of all that as they come in. Daily counts, I've been having my admission concession topside staff. As they come in, we write down pass holder numbers because I wanted to keep track. In the past, there hasn't been a way to keep track of whose passes has... has pass holder numbers that come in, and how many times they use it. Admissions, that all goes into... Well, everything goes into the computer. But when you put in a pass holder number, all you put in is a number as far as how many's coming in. There's no way on the computer to keep track of the actual pass number. So, we're doing that on the side on spreadsheet. So, periodically, I can let you know who's using their pass, how many times they're coming in. So, we've been doing that since day one. We've had, and the reason I'm doing this is because we've had a couple people try and use old pass numbers or other people's pass numbers. So, every time someone comes in, we are able to look up who's on that pass and how many people are on the pass. Whether they're in an individual pass, which is one, or a family pass, which is two or more.
Well, I'm glad you do that, because we never did get that working the last couple of years. We bought it.
Right. Well, and like I said, I mean, we can put in a number for a pass holder, but we can't actually put in their pass holder number to keep track of it. But we do have all the pass holder's information in there. So, before they ring them up, they'll ask them their pass or their last name, and we can look it up. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think it's important for you guys to know who's using their passes, how many times they're using them. So, you know, it's something that I just felt was good information. My staff, I currently have 28 on staff, eight work concession admission topside, 20 lifeguards, including myself and my assistant managers. And the assistant manager's lifeguard, when we're shorthanded, which has been a lot in June, I did have to let two lifeguards go and one admission concession worker, who had taken the CPR first aid AED class and then decided before the season started, he didn't want to work there. So, I said something to City Hall about, you know, because they knew that if they did take the certification and they didn't come to work, they had to pay for it. So, I know City Hall has billed him. I don't know if he's reimbursed or not. The two lifeguards that I had to let go, I did send them a text and ask them to return their suits, because that's part of the policy also. I don't foresee that happening, though. Fecal incidents, the first week of June, we had three fecal incidents in a week. They were confined areas, so we just had to get people out of the water for 45 minutes and put chemical in that confined area. I mean, if it would have been diarrhea or vomit, we would have probably had to shock the pool and close it for the day. I did get these from the CDC. There's three, you know, signs that say, you know, "Keep the germs out of the pool", this one, and then another one. So, these are posted in all three bathrooms, plus the breezeway. And the signs were free to us from CDC, but I did have them laminated, so they would last longer. It seems to have taken care of its problems, since I put it on Facebook. The advocate wrote an article about it. So, I think it's kind of taken care of its problem. And there's no way to track as far as if it was one person, because they were in three separate areas of the pool. So, you can't say it was just toddlers or infants because, you know, of the areas of the pool it was in.
I did read an article, and Darlene sent it to me, that Manhattan had the same problem.
Oh.
So, we're not special in that regard.
Right. Well, that's, you know...
We want to be special, but not in that regard.
It's kind of nice to... Well, it isn't nice, but it's encouraging to know that we're not the only ones that have to address the situation. Swim lessons began the first week in June. We're down to our fourth week, and the last two weeks have been private. We had a lot of good compliments on our staff and how well they did and how organized everything was. So, you know, I did relay that to my staff. We have seven guards that are giving lessons this week. Unfortunately, two of the guards that were terminated were giving lessons, so I had to come up with all, you know, find other guards to fill in those two spots, which kind of leaves us shorthanded. And so, I'm having to lifeguard this week, just so we have enough guards to give the lessons.
Do you run the lessons all throughout the summer?
No.
Just June?
Just June.
Oh, okay. So, it's a short-term problem.
Yeah. It is. You know, we decided to go with that, just because it was new to me. It was new to a lot of the guards, and we thought we'd see how this went. If we needed to open it up, we would, but right now, we don't need to. Swim team practice goes from 8:00 to 9:30 in the morning, and then 11:15 to 12:30 Monday through Friday. We've had to do a lot of work together to get both groups on the same page. Sharing lap lanes during lessons was the most challenging, because, you know, they have their older kids in the morning. But with swim lessons, you know, that's money that's been paid by the patrons. So, we tried to, you know, get as many lanes as we needed. So, I think we've kind of, you know, worked that situation out. Another situation that I have is storage area. In our storage area, a lot of swim team equipment is kept there along with the chemical room. So, that leaves a lot of stuff in a combined area. It was mentioned to me before, you know, the season started, that maybe swim team could put up their own storage set, which would help getting a lot of their equipment out of our way. But that wasn't received as well as I had anticipated, so...
Well, they usually make some kind of donation, so maybe you should readdress that.
I did. I did. So, you know, it's something maybe to address later on, if we really feel that we need more room, so...
All that design of the pool, and we don't have enough storage space. Painful.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, you're all welcome to come down, and I can show you everything that we've, you know, done this year and what I'm talking about. On Wednesday nights, we have free swim from 6:00 to 8:00. But this Wednesday, we will not due to a swim meet that was scheduled. I'm hoping next year that maybe I can talk to the swim coach and maybe not have her do it on a Wednesday night. I have posted on Facebook. I put a sign in the window. It's been in the paper that this week was the exception with no free swim. Pool parties, we have 23 pool parties already scheduled this year. Five have already been held, and they've all been very well-staffed and very, you know, people have been really happy with, you know, the pool party so far. A question I do have, that last year, apparently lap swim during the noon session was offered last year after swim team was over. I don't know how you feel, if you want to do that again this year. If we did, it would probably be from 11:00 to 12:30, so it wouldn't be two hours. But, you know, it's up to you whether you want to offer that again.
Do you know how many people used that last year?
In the afternoon?
No. While they... This, yeah, the PM lap swim, from 11:00 to 12:30.
Well, the two weeks after the pool was closed, they had maybe four to six people. I don't know how many during the year.
I'd say 10 to 12, I used it, at least. I would say 10 to 12.
So, you know, it's probably not as many as the morning swim. But again, that's from 6:00 to 8:00, so...
Do you have guards that can staff that?
I can.
You guys, how do you feel about that? We have a pool. The swim season, I'm kind of suggest more people use it, the better.
Get in.
Get in.
Yeah. So, if you can staff it, I think you should go ahead and start it.
Do you want to go from 11:00 to 12:30?
Whatever works best for your schedule.
Okay. Because we need at least a half hour to get ready for opening. And I hate to really go any earlier than 11:00. I mean, 10...
Then you miss the lunch hour, people.
Right. I mean, we're getting done at 8:00 and then turn around to come back at 10:30, just to make sure we have two hours. I feel that 11:00 would be better.
Yeah.
11:00 to 12:30.
We'll try 11:00.
Okay.
Makes sense. It works your schedule.
Okay. End of the school, end of the year's hours. School begins August 15, and we have three pool parties already scheduled that following weekend, which I'm assuming you would want to be open that following weekend, since school starts on a Thursday. We can maybe be open Wednesday, the 14th, all day. And then, I don't know if you want to open after school on Thursday and Friday, and then be open regular hours on the weekend, or cut down the hours. So, I want to know how you guys feel, and how far into the season you want to go. I have talked to a lot of my staff already, who are willing to work the weekends, probably not after school, because sports will be starting. I've tried to get dates from my college students when they will be going back, so I know their exact last day. So...
So, you're trying to figure out if we... If you have adequate staffing to do the weekends or not?
Yeah. I mean, I've said that tentatively, without coming to you, that we could maybe go through Labor Day weekend. But again, I would have to get your approval on how you want to handle that.
And you're trying to say from 1:00 to 5:00?
Yeah. It's just a suggestion.
On Saturday, Sunday?
I'm in favor of us having it open as long as possible. The season's already short. Pool, you know, people already want to make sure their tax dollars are good value and whatnot. And, I mean, I... Who knows? We could have sunshine, heat, longer than we expect this year. I think we should keep it open as long as possible, as long as staffing allows.
I think so, too, as long as you staff it.
As long as you can staff it.
Right.
That's the main thing. And, well, we'll just change our hours according to the staffing you have.
Okay. Okay.
And then, so you want to go 1:00 to 5:00 on, just on the weekends after school starts?
Yes.
And then you want your last day to be...
Well, that's another thing. I wanted to go through Labor Day weekend, which would be, I think, the second. But I've been approached by Bob Huff, who says the gravel dash is, I believe, the seventh. He approached me and asked me if all the family that's waiting for the bikers to come back in, would we consider doing maybe that Saturday from like 1:00 to 4:00 for families that are waiting in town for their bikers to come back? I said, "Again, I would have to put it before the council and see how you felt about that."
Do you have staff?
I have talked to some of them. I don't have a definite yes, but because I, you know, I said...
That's usually the issue when we get to that time of year, is the staff goes like this.
Yeah.
And that's where we've always cut the line, is when we don't have adequate staff to staff it. It's not that we don't want to go longer into the... By the time gravel dash comes around, everybody's back at school, back at college, doing all that stuff.
But by the same token, if we can find a way to make it happen, it'll only improve that event, the new running event this year, and be a community positive.
Which that's...
If we can find a way.
I have no argument with that, but the staff is the key.
Well, you have... When will you think you'll know about the staffing for that event?
I would know this week, because I would have to get a commitment from them. It's just like, you know, I need to know who's available.
And if you have to shut down the slides, you shut down the slides. I mean, based on availability.
We have to have a manager on duty plus seven lifeguards.
Even without the slides?
No. Not without the slides. We could take out the cleaning rotation, so that would put us down to six guards. So, as long as we had seven to, well, myself and seven to commit, or six to commit, we could do it. Again, I can get, put it out there and get, you know, tell them I need to know by next week or by the next council meeting, if you would like.
And then the other option, I mean, I don't know if you can make it more like an adult swim. We could limit it to adults rather than families. Then you wouldn't have to have as much staffing. It'd be more like lap swim, right? Possibly? I'm just saying...
Well, it depends on what part of the pool they're in. I mean, if they're on the diving boards, if they're on the slides, you actually need people to watch them as safety issues.
Oh, even if it's all about... Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the family slide, you need somebody right there on the family slide with kids coming down. You know, the south area, they have to watch that whole area, plus, you know, the baby area, the lap lanes, you know, that's a separate area. So, technically, unless you are going to take out all the slides, which is a big attraction, you really don't want to cut down more than six guards.
Okay. All right. Well, I think, you know, if you find the staffing, are you guys all okay? If she can kind of leave it with her, if she can find the staffing, we're good. To extend it, as long as you can extend it.
Okay. Okay.
I appreciate all your work to get the staffing.
Lap swim, that will depend on also the morning lap swim when, and if you want me to keep the afternoon lap swim after, during the week. Last year, we kept it till August 31st, which I don't have a problem doing. But it's, again, something that you guys need to decide and let me know if you want to go ahead and keep the morning lap swim and/or the afternoon swim Monday through Friday.
Well, why don't you let us know how much attendance you have at the midday swim?
Okay.
And we can decide.
Last year, wasn't it due to chemical, the amount of chemical we had?
There was only three days before I even came on board that they had some chemical problems.
Well, no, but it was like, we ran out.
Oh.
And that's what it did swim. And so, we'd said that this year...
That was a good memory, Tina.
Well, this year, we'd said that we were going to try and make sure we had enough to be able to extend it out a little bit longer, if possible.
Okay.
Okay.
So, check chemicals, check staffing.
Okay.
And as long as you can do it, we encourage you.
Okay. Maintenance issues this year. There are still some things that need to be fixed. Two showers in the manse and two showers in women, which maintenance is aware of. They have two pipes in the chemical room. They're aware of those also, and I think they're trying to get them fixed.
These are our water and sewer department doing? The waters doing? Okay.
Yeah. Maintenance and getting the pool ready for the season was kind of challenging. I was not able to complete prior to the pool opening, because city staff was busy, and I understand that. They had a lot of things that came up with their everyday jobs. But there was a lot of things that I can't do, or I was unable, I didn't know had to be done. So, my husband did a lot of it.
Thank you, Julie.
I recruited him to come in. You know, because there was a lot of tasks I just didn't have the strength to do, or I didn't know how to do. So, that was kind of, you know, challenging. Plus, I didn't have the tools to do them. And there was a lot of times, he had to go back home to get tools.
Are you... Now, you're a certified pool operator, okay?
I am.
And Kent is a certified pool operator?
Tony is a certified.
Tony is?
I forget if Kent was.
Okay. So, we just need to make sure that they're available. Because the pool, when we had to repair that one, it cost us thousands of dollars. We need to make sure the pool closing goes as smoothly as the opening. So, we just need to make sure that gets done.
Yeah. And I mean, there is a lot of stuff with the pipes and stuff that I can't do, that they will have to do. So, we had both inspections this year. First, we had the health department come, and there was about four things that needed to be fixed. Three of them, well, there was five things. Three of them, I was able to take care of. It was just, you know, we needed some probes to check the hot dogs and the cheese. And I needed to get calcium or chlorine test strips to make sure that we have enough chlor... Can we... Or Clorox in the water when we wash our utensils and stuff, and make sure that we keep the counters clean with Clorox, just because it's a, you know, an issue for patrons getting sick. The sink in the concession wasn't hot enough, and they did replace the faucets in there, and that was taken care of. The water temperature is adequate. We are still waiting on a part for the mop sink. But she went ahead and came back and did everything last week and passed us. But I just need to let her know when that mop sink part is put in, so she can document that we did finalize everything. The boiler inspection took place last Wednesday. There are two issues that have to be completed before he will sign off and issue us a certificate of inspection. There's a gauge by the boiler that is broken, and I believe Kent had Hannover Electric come look at it today to replace that. Also, the... Also, the emergency shut-off for the boiler is in between the two, the electrical door and the door where we keep the chemicals, since they're not exits, they have to have, and they don't consider the garage door an exit, because we don't use that, it's always locked, they have to put up an emergency shut-off valve right by the exit door, and I think Kent had them look at that. So as soon, and they have to be done within 30 days, as soon as that stuff is done, I need to send him a copy of the invoice that it's been paid, before he will issue us a certificate, certificate of inspection.
So what happens if we don't get it within the 30 days? They shut down our pool? I mean, I'm just...
It's a possibility, it is a possibility.
Okay, and this Kansas Department, Health Department, is that an annual inspection?
They come every year.
Okay, okay.
And then the last thing, I have maintenance issues for next year. The slides will need to be restored, all three of them, along with the dump buckets. They, it, it took me a long time this year to get all, as much of the buildup off of as I could, but, and then I waxed them, but they need to be restored.
What does that mean?
Like, all the old buildup taken off and then recoded, because the...
So do we send them in somewhere?
Oh, the slides? No.
Somebody probably will come out.
Send them in somewhere, take them apart, I don't know, okay.
Yeah, no.
So you just have some...
But I have talked to a couple people, chemical pools for one and another place, that will come look at us and give us an estimate as far as what that's going to cost to have that done.
But you wouldn't want that done until next spring, correct?
No, there's no way, there's no way that they can get it done before next spring.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't want to do it this fall, and then have weather, weather get on them.
Yeah.
But if we schedule far enough out, they would be able to come next spring and do it.
I have a question, do they normally, do you sign up for some sort of program where they come back every fourth, fifth year, third year, or do you know how that usually, or if it's just one at a time?
Yeah, I don't know, so, but the Kent, the company that Continental recommended is very sought after, they're very reputable, so, you know, and they're out of Kansas City, which is nice also. The, the, okay, two diving boards, the surface on the diving boards are in bad shape, I think those possibly, I don't know if they can resurface those, or they'll have to replace those, but the finish is peeling off. We've replaced one on the hot, on the larger diving board, we've replaced one step, we're waiting for the second step to come in. One of the boards, the screws has come loose, and one of our guards has been tightening it. Again, I don't know if that's something that will just have to be done periodically, every week, or, you know, to get us through this year. We've, yeah, I've said we've replaced one of the steps. The bottom of the pool needs work, I don't know if it needs to be resurfaced, how that is all handled, but there is places that is very rough, and we do have kids that have come to us, like, they scraped the bottom of the foot, and, and their foot is bleeding, so, you know, we give them bandwidth.
We had that a lot when that was brand new.
Yeah, and, you know, we had that big discussion last year, between the pool maker and the Brighton people, about draining the pool or not draining the pool, remember that discussion? I'm, I still think leaving it open for the winter like we did is what's causing the problem, why it gets so rough.
The bottom is much better off compared to opening last year to this year. There was no more damage to the floor, because we left it drained.
Empty?
Yeah.
But you're, the roughness, your thing is, you're saying is caused by...
It's exposed to the elements all one and all.
You think that's what it is? Do you, can you tell, well, the whole pool is open though, so...
I mean, I, I can call Continental and ask them what they think, if you would like me to, or...
Yeah, or if other pools have had this, I mean, they've made hundreds of pools.
I mean, I, if, if you want me to follow up, I can see if one versus the other is worse than the other, I don't know. But I don't think it happened just from last year, I think it's been happening, but if you look down there, you can see where it's flaking off, so. Lounge chairs, we've, we will need to be replacing some of them, I think some of them are pretty old, we've already had two that are broken, another one that is cracked, so I will be, have to, having to get rid of that, so, I mean, it's nothing that we probably need to worry about before next year, but some of them are starting to get in pretty bad shape. The pad under the family slide will need to be replaced, they did this year tighten down the screws as much as they could, and put some washers down to hold it, but it is starting to float back up, so we will probably need to look at replacing that. Of course, we'll have to get new rope, I, I used all the rope that we had to put in new ropes this year, but some of them are still starting to wear that were not replaced this year, so I know we'll be ordering that. The grout around the pool, some of it is coming up, so I think that will all have to be taken out, I mean, it, it looks, it's, it's starting to wear, so I think a possibility of regrouting around the whole pool.
That needs to be done this fall, so keep the water out of the seams, so we don't buckle the concrete underneath.
I've been like, trying to power wash as, when I can, of course, with swim team, lessons, swim team, open session, the only time I can really do it is Saturday and Sunday, and I did power wash the whole pool last Saturday and Sunday, just because that'll keep the algae from going into the cracks also. Let's see, seams around the stainless steel gutters, some will need to be welded again as they were this year, because some of them are starting to leak already. I don't know if they're the same places, but again, they're starting to leak. Both our vacuums are back down again, I did email the one gentleman that, and carbon Cindy and Austin, that repaired our Autobot, because there's no reason it should not be working. We haven't used it enough that it should be down already. The other one, I believe, we're going to have some people from one of the other departments come down and look at it, once we get through swim team, because again, right now, there's not a lot of free time that we have to vacuum, but it's nice when I can throw that Autobot in, but this other one takes two people to work it, but it, the last time we put it in, it was not suctioning, and we don't know why it's not running to suction, so, that is my report.
I just want to say, wow, you are thorough.
Yeah.
So, thank you for being so thorough, and all those repairs seem reasonable. I guess I should, the council is in agreement that keep the pool open as long as possible, I kind of said that without everybody shaking their head, but, okay. So based on staffing, I just want to make sure the whole council was in consensus for that.
Do you want me to come back at the next council meeting and let you know about staff, or just give a report to you?
You can just give a, unless you want to come back for another reason, just...
I just, I just felt that I should come in and talk to you, so you could know who I was, if you don't know who I am, and how I'm handling things, and...
Well, I, I feel compelled to say, I've been hearing your name a lot around town in a good way.
Oh.
People, I've never heard as many positive things about the pool, but people are definitely noticing the good you're doing there, so, thank you.
Well, my family, my family came again this year, and they were like, I can't believe Marisol has a pool like this, they're always like, this is unbelievable, so they love it.
We've had comments from Seneca, people are starting to come over here, so I felt really good about that.
I feel a lot of people from Beatrice are coming down.
Really?
Really? Because their pool isn't heated.
Sometimes that pool is packed.
Yeah.
When we went there, like, on a four, we went from four to 5:30, thinking it would be less people, it was packed everywhere, I was like, well, it's good, we want people swimming, so...
I will let you know, we did have some resistance in the beginning about one of the rules that has been in place, but it wasn't enforced, and we started enforcing it on day one, and it seems to have been, you know, everybody seems to be okay with it now, but, you know, the one where everyone has to pay, even if they're coming in to watch, and the reason being is because I think, I think, you know, it, it could be, I could be wrong, but, you know, a lot of people have used it in the past, as far as wearing their suits in, people are still getting in the water, even if they don't have suits on, and, and, you know, I, I just don't, I make everybody follow the same rule, I don't make exceptions, because that's not fair to anybody else, so...
The only thing I thought of is maybe if the people, but add work to your staff, I understand, but you could put one of those bands, like, the barbecue bands on, and the people that aren't supposed to be in the pool, you would notice it if they're in the pool and say, is that way too much?
Well, we did, we did thought, we thought about doing that, but trying to keep track of, you know, as people come in, the mad rush they are, it's hard to put bans on people also. I mean, it, it is something that we could probably maybe...
I just had a couple people call me and said, you know, I'm not going to swim, and I just want to be there with my family, so...
I mean, everybody's pretty accepting of it now, and, you know, we tell them if they don't want to, they're more than welcome to go sit on the outside of the fence, and there's benches, there's picnic tables there, and, you know, it's, it's, I think it's pretty well-accepted now, so...
Okay.
Anyway, all right.
Kathy, I have a question about swim lessons. I noticed with the receipts that families of means do the, normally do the private lessons, so I wonder how the swimmers are doing in the group lessons?
Actually, they're doing very well. We made sure that we had a lifeguard and an assistant, and the smaller groups, like level one, level two, we did like, four to five per guard and assistant, versus the other levels, like, levels three and four, up to six per guard and assistant, and then level five, four, or five and six, we would up to eight, but that's getting to where the kids know more of how to swim, and they're trying to critique their, their strokes. So, yeah, we tried to make it adequate for the smaller ones, so...
Good, good. Good question, good question. All right, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Scotland Dean here?
Yep.
Nope.
Was he here?
I don't think so.
He was, stepped in.
Um, he did stop by my house, I believe, he stopped by, talked to a few of you other people about this, and I just encouraged him to come back, because he, I, I probably won't report like he would report, but he said, you know, I followed the instructions giving me the bid criteria, and I may, you know, with my bid, I, I felt like I gave the very best price, reducing labor and those kind of expenses to make it a good bid for the city, and he said, it's not my fault that no one else bid, and I guess I kind of go back to our situation with inline construction, I'm no, I'm sorry, JD Construction on the alley behind the Sunfire Credit Union, and when we, we only got one bid for that, we decided it was unfair to bid out after somebody had given that bid, well, I think we're in the same situation with this, and...
Well, I think we need to control that better, if we only get one bid, we don't open it.
And he did that...
And today, I saw that.
And Austin did that today, but I think, I think we, you know, who else did he talk to? Did he talk to you? Did, did I, the two, he talked, so, so do you guys have more to add about that?
No, that's the gist of it.
Yeah.
Well, well, how do you guys feel? I, I went ahead and asked Austin to go ahead and include the bids, because I felt like we really do need to treat everyone fairly, he did meet the criteria.
In retrospect, I, I, I agree, but on the other hand, I don't know that we can unreject a bid, I think that's kind of a dangerous precedent to set in itself, regretful or not, but I agree with, I mean, the premise that he did follow the rules, and I, I feel badly that that went down the way it did. That's just my opinion.
You guys also talked to him, what, what do you want to do?
It's not fair at this point, probably, to set it out to bid against us, everybody else that would be bidding has already seen this price that he had.
See, that's the whole thing, is everybody knows what's out there.
Yeah, everybody knows what's out there.
And now, you know, we've basically shot him and us in the foot, doing that, so, I think this is just another lesson, you know, if we, next time we bid out and we get one, then we need to have some sort of rule for that, you know, are we going to just not open it, and set it out a second time, and just leave it?
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, yeah, I mean, Scott's working really hard, to be competitive and trying to build that, that business as his own.
Did you send bid sheets back out again, Austin?
No, you said to wait for two months.
We said to wait till September, at the last meeting.
Yeah, that's right, we did.
So, you guys don't want to reconsider these?
Well, the problem is, this isn't the first time this has happened.
Not a matter...
We talked about doing it differently in the future, and then we don't.
Yeah, do we need to have a policy change?
Wait, wait a second, yes, for the floor, yes.
I believe the person that put that bid in was following instructions, and I think it's up to us to accept his bid to fix our stupid, we should have done it different, and the way we did it, he complied, I think we should comply, and set some kind of a deal where it don't ever happen again.
Yep.
I agree on the we're being stupid part. I think we did do it wrong, I think you're right, and I think we should keep it from happening again, but I just don't think we should start the precedent of trying to roll back either, I mean, I, I think just kick the whole dang thing down the road or something, I, I don't know what the solution is, there's no great one.
Well, just for the record, we're rolling back on the airport as well, tonight, so we made a motion to refund the 16,000, and now we're...
Potentially.
Potentially keeping the 16,000 and improving the road, so we have another rollback situation just tonight. I would feel better if we went ahead and accepted one, for one of these products, one of these bids that he gave us, but that's a really council decision.
I don't think we really have much choice, we don't want to set a precedence for other people who give us bids if that's the same situation, you know, we want, we will, with the people that send those in. I think that's real important, because we depend on them.
So are you proposing that we go ahead and look at that bid?
Yeah, we need to look at it, we really need to do it, because what else we have? What else we have? I mean, this is what we have.
But I agree...
This is our situation, that we created.
We, as a council?
We, all, it's a we, and this is, we'll just go from here, and we'll, we'll make some different rules on it.
I should say, we, as a council, have to deal with, we have to deal with it, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Is this project have to happen? I don't mean ever, obviously, someday, but does it have to happen this year, or next year? Or is it, it'd be good for it to happen, but it doesn't have to happen?
That's a good, good point.
Nothing has to happen, but one of them's from the seventies, one of them's from the early nineties, and they are past their life, life expectancy.
They do need replaced. If they make it through the summer, probably, but, yeah, they're, they're old. One of the outside condensers has been replaced, maybe in the early nineties, but then both the furnaces are original, and the one air conditioner is original.
Right.
They're, they're old, they, we've gotten over and get out of them.
We could make a motion, that if he is willing to still offer that price, we would accept the price at this time, I mean, that's an, a, a, a motion we could make, make it contingent that he's willing to still offer that price to us, he might not be, well, I'm just saying.
Right.
So, do you guys want to make that motion, or you just want to move on? It's you guys' call. It's you guys' call.
I wanna make the motion to accept the bid from Pot Electric.
For which one though? We, remember he listed.
D.
For D.
D was the one that Austin recommended.
Okay, D.
Two-stage, 16.
I think it's the best for the money and for the, and to, the higher efficiency ones are more maintenance possibly if they break down.
Yeah, I would shy away from the end user.
Yeah. So yeah, the 95% two-stage 16 seer AC would be in my, my opinion, the, the best for our money.
So did you make that motion? I'm sorry, did somebody make that motion? Bobby, did you accept number D?
Yes.
Coming out of the general fund because it's budgeting? Was there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion?
I, I just wanna put it on the floor again. I think we're setting a dangerous precedent by rolling ourselves back to the previous meeting.
I think we set a dangerous precedent by looking at these bids.
I, I agree, but we can fix.
And we already did, and we already did it once, we're gonna do it again tonight, possibly. I mean, we have to stop doing it, that's the key.
Right, if you make the right decision in the first place, you don't have to make a second decision. Yeah, I get that.
All right, all right, so with that being said, it's the, for the 15,782-50. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And I, as, having a business that's been involved in, in bids, this is just the wrong way to handle it.
I think we handled it wrong last time.
Well, I mean, two times. I mean, once is bad enough, but two times.
I mean, we handled it wrong last meeting, we should have remembered about the alley.
Well, to be, you know, just, you can have disagreement with me, the alley was kind of a freak incident where we asked for an estimate and they supplied a bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we still shouldn't have looked at it, so.
Or made a public.
Okay, so 5-3, well, go ahead, if he's willing to stay with that price, right? All right, I hope that's why he came or didn't come. Okay, so ProTrak and Tennis, I didn't, I don't see Mary here.
She's a KU, but it's.
Yeah, she called me late this afternoon and, and said, she apologized, she looked at her calendar wrong and asked that we put, that the council postponed this decision again to, because she would like to come and discuss this whole, the whole tennis court. She feels that the tennis court is in the right spot, that the engineers have presented in the past how you can make it a right, the right location and she would hope that you'd give her a chance to talk about it.
Council, what, what'd you like to do?
Oh, and she said she'd be willing to walk each and every one of you through the, the courts and tell you, and show you the courts.
I'm always in favor of a shorter meeting, but whatever.
Well, she's not here.
Yeah, you can't do anything about it anyway.
And that was why we postponed.
That's all, yeah.
Yeah.
And how much longer are they gonna?
Yeah, once ProTrak need to be in here by.
Well, it says valid dates on June 3rd, 21st, but it's you guys' call. If you make a motion to accept the proposal, we'll go with it. If you make a motion to postpone it to the next meeting.
I move to table to the next meeting.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table for the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
6-2? All right, we'll bring it up again. All right, the next item is the amendment, that's on page 27. I saw the signs are already up for 20 miles per hour, so I hope we pass this ordinance.
It jumped right on it.
So all they did was add five, number five, to the existing ordinance, so would entertain a motion to approve it?
Move to approve ordinance number.
Do we have a number, Cindy?
Let me just see, 1875?
1875.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Os?
Yes.
Pipia?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fry?
Yank.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Eight oh.
Yep.
All right, the next is nettes and hearings, I don't know, do you wanna share anything about the planning and zoning, darling?
Well, there was a public hearing for Kramer's request for the bulk propane, 30,000 gallon. Three people appeared and spoke against it, but the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve the request. And another item on their agenda is Seventh Street from Calhoun to North Street, changing the zoning on that, but they haven't prepared the, the ordinance yet.
And they decided to keep, and they're zoning it from industrial to residential, except for the three existing businesses. I think that's what they decided at the end. The, the text amendment that they're gonna publish is in the information packet and the only thing I would wanna say is on the third line, it says communication towers and it should be and antennas because that's how it's mentioned in the code book. So if you can make that slight change before you publish it. So did you guys look at this text amendment that was in the, and this was drafted from, from the meeting and it's changing all of them to, from the 60 feet to the 30 foot as we requested? Okay, are you guys all right with that? Okay, we'll proceed with the text amendment. The overlay district did pass, there was a lot of public discussion and some concerns, but I feel like Kramer is having public meetings to discuss it and trying to calm everyone's concerns that they have. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, there were some safety concerns. They kinda compared it to anhydrous ammonia, which is very, very dangerous.
Okay, going along for the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think everybody should think about that because when we talked about what they were gonna do out there, we only agreed about this building and then they turn around and it's about a big propane storage thing and there's a lot of renters and stuff, people out there, didn't even get a notice because it was just, it just went to the owners. That kinda hurts if something does happen and I, I think everybody should be aware of that as long as the liability is covered.
Yeah, he was gonna work on an emergency plan to have it prepared and distribute to these people. He's meeting with the people at the duplexes as well as bulldog departments to contact all those people and, and the other neighbors, any other neighbors. He was gonna hold two separate meetings, so.
It's kinda tough, just like right across the street. Well, man was here and then he left.
Mr. Throm?
Gilbert Throm, this is kinda gonna affect, evaluate his property if he ever wants to sell it to have a 30,000 gallon propane tank across the street. That wasn't, he brought it up and he complained about it and I think everybody should know. There probably would have been other people, maybe the council would even thought different about it if they knew that it was gonna be for propane storage instead of just a building. That's what we talked about to begin with.
Oh, Chad Kramer did present information showing that the, the danger is very low. He already has gallons and gallons of diesel and gasoline there, so it's not, it's not comparable to anhydrous ammonia.
Not the poison, you know.
Which, you know, a leak is very dangerous.
I just wanna make sure everybody knew about it.
Yeah, and hopefully have those meetings and.
I mean, I, I think we should probably even got some advice from our insurance company about it. See how they, they felt about it because he told the planning commission that he had $9 million worth of, but if something happens out there, $9 million is a drop in the bucket.
Well, do you want Dave to come and share at the next meeting?
I don't know what to suggest, I just think, I think when, we never talked about when they were gonna build and get their building permit and all that, we didn't, I didn't know and I'm sure nobody else did either, that it was for a sizable propane storage deal.
Yeah, I thought that he discussed he wanted to branch under the propane, didn't he?
I can't hear what you're saying.
I think he discussed that he wanted to branch under the propane when he talked about expanding out there.
When he was talking about buying the land?
I think so, yeah.
I think he, I think he did share, he didn't give us any specifics, but I think he did share that he wanted to add another business, right?
That's, I think, what he said. He was expand, he was looking into expanding, but I don't, I don't remember saying what it was.
He didn't say that.
He didn't say it was gonna be propane, I don't think, not that I know of anyway, so.
I'll have to look back.
But the, the tank will not be in the building.
No.
No. So we can have Dave come, you want me to ask Dave to come? Have Dave come next meeting and to share more, give us an update, see how the meetings went, maybe? I think it's worthwhile.
Bring him in.
No? Bring him in?
Bring him in.
Bring Dave in, okay, next meeting. Dave to share, okay.
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so it looks like the credit union wants to approve two things, the waiver, the fireworks and the street closing. You guys are okay with that?
Yep.
And then the, the next one is a consumption request at the Lee Demart Center and the third one is a consumption request at City Park for a class reunion when they have the tailgate there. I sent an email to Cindy and Austin, I don't know who responded to me, I said, have we, my question was, have we ever done a consumption request for a tented area in City Park for a class reunion before, during this tailgate activity? And it says, we have not done this before, the tent area would be the restricted area, they would have been instructed, if approved, they would have to cordon off the area, the only time we can think they, and have approved alcohol in the park is for squirrel jam. So they do have their tent over separated, you know, in the picture on page 31, the tailgate will be near the gazebo and they're across the street and in another area over where our tent camping really is, kinda. So are you just okay with that? I just wanted to make sure. And, and I guess, you know, of course, what we're doing is when, anytime we agree with that, we're setting our precedent that people can do this, so I just wanna make sure.
Mayor, Mr. Stokes is here from the class.
Yeah, is there anything you wanna share other than what you presented? I wasn't gonna put, make him come up, but go ahead. Is there anything you wanna add?
Well, we're in the planning stage of putting this together, registration hasn't gone out, tentative one has, we identified the park as a probable location for having a gathering. We're kinda doing an all outdoor thing on Friday, golf in the morning, parade in the afternoon and then since the tailgate party is down there, I thought it'd be best if we would be quite a bit farther away from it.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So the old Simmons Auditorium is a nice level spot.
Oh, you're way down there. You're not, you're not at the tent area, you're down at the bottom where the playground, well, the playground is.
The bottom of the stairs and all that.
Yeah, the bottom of the stairs, I thought at the time I filled this out, we were gonna have a bigger tent, it sounds like it's going to be just like a little tailgate tent, have a place to have the beer in and then we'll have to blockade area off around.
You'll do that? You'll blockade and you'll.
So, and have it advertised and everybody will have name tags or wristbands, that's in our class or their guest and those are the only people that'll be allowed inside the area.
That's good, parakeet, and you'll have little signs that say, no alcohol beyond these barricades, that's what we do. Okay, I feel a little bit better about it.
And I don't know how, how well you wanna barricade it off, I was talking, I talked to several people, you know, sounded like you could supply us barricades and I don't know if we have to have solid barricades or if you police tape in between and just have one or two openings, you know, we'll do whatever you guys would suggest. We don't have a problem with that. We're, I mean, we're 50 years past graduation, so we aren't wild and crazy like some of you guys, but we still, you know, thought it'd be nice to be outside and have a few beers and, and visit and go over to the game and we'd be done, so.
What would you like to require? Yes.
Madam, could I interrupt for just one second? I, I really think it'd be nice if they could do that, but if we were gonna, to keep from setting the precedent, let's say it's for, it's for at least 50-year or older reunions. That keeps.
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah.
So you're saying people that will consume much alcohol, that you're trying to.
50-year reunions, you know how to handle that.
Are you sure?
Well, my five-year reunion, it wouldn't have been a good thing. I'll give you that.
And I understand your concern, you know, we're, that's why, you know, we're willing to work with you, whatever, to close it off and again, we're, some of us are able to walk around real, real well, others don't walk so well anymore, so you know, it's probably not gonna get very wild and crazy and as far as timeframe, you know, sometime after the parade, go down and get things set up and whatever and then before the game starts, we'll be done, head over to watch football game and that's it, so.
So you guys okay with it for the most part? What kinda barricade, what kinda cording off do you want them to do? Do you wanna have a?
Go ahead, not just the tape, you know, the barricades, just have a few barricade, barricades there, you know?
Not necessarily solid back to back.
No, I don't think so, I just think we need to have there for just a reminder.
Well, we'll sign up, you know, the class of 69, you know, welcome class of 69, something like that and then some signs scattered around, you know, no alcohol beyond barricades.
Okay, yeah.
Like one barricade on each side, like one on, you know, four barricades or something like that.
Oh, probably want more than that, I just, I would feel more comfortable having.
Whatever, yeah.
More than that.
Get back with us.
Is there maybe, you know, we have the largest class to graduate in Marysville, I don't know how many of them will be there, but you know, there could be 50 people there maybe and.
150, you never know.
Could be 150, so.
So you want the, you need the city barricades?
Yes, we could and we can, I can, we can get them and set them up or you can bring them down and dump them off and we'll set them up, you know, whatever.
Okay.
That'd be nice.
I can talk to.
Oh yeah, you don't have a time on this, when, when, what are you thinking from the parade? What, the parade like?
We'll be done by seven because that's when the game starts, so.
So like four to seven, do you think?
Four to seven, 3:30 to seven, something like that.
Okay, well, we can make three to seven, we'll just, just have the barricades taken down there that morning?
That'd be fine.
Is that all right?
There won't be any alcohol down there till after the parade and we'll have to dismantle the float and the more help we get, the sooner we get down the park, but I'm sure we won't be there before three, I don't know, is the parade at 2:30?
It's somewhere.
Anybody know?
Yeah.
I think it is, but whatever, but 3:30 would be the earliest.
Okay, we'll just put three to seven to make sure.
By seven or sooner or so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, all right.
Thank you.
We'll wait and see how many people come to your largest class ever reunion. All right, the next item is the appropriations ordinance.
Move to approve ordinance 3701.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discuss, is there any discussion? No discussion about large items, I'm shocked.
I can present several large items. Transfers per budget totaled $68,957. Payroll was $65,009.18, a little higher than the usual. Library tax distribution was $83,236. And then we paid for Nima Hall Motors for the sewer, street, excuse me, water sewer tract, $34,750.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the payroll was higher because all the pool salaries were in there, so. All right, anything else? Roll call, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Pipia?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throng?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Aideau.
All right. Austin, you're up.
All right, first thing up is the Police and Fire Committee formed a selection committee and met on Friday to evaluate qualifications submitted from five different architecture firms. I failed to list all those, but I wanted everybody to know we had one from Ben Moore Architects, CES, Beeberly Architecture, BG, and SPT, which is Spangenberg Phillips Enticed Architecture. So for the evaluation process, we used a grading scale to put on, put one candidate over the others. Selection committee wanted to emphasize that they based a lot of the decision off of past experience with fire stations and work with CDBG funding. At least those were main criteria. When you look, when you take both of those into consideration, BG consultants had the better qualifications as they had more work with fire stations and CDBG funding. And I had all the submitted qualifications, if you wanted to stop by and look at them. So the, the selection committee recommended BG consultants, and that's the recommendation to move forward with the, with the fire station process. I did find out, just for information's sakes, like the mayor pointed out, $600,000 in funding from CDBG if our application is approved. I also learned that there's a minimum 25% match, but the more match the city provides, the more points towards your application. This, I also found, the architecture would be considered matching funds. So we pay for the architecture, it goes towards matching funds on our part. That's, came from Emily at North Central Regional Planning, so.
Well, I just want to know that BG had done 27 fire stations and had done 27 community development block grants, and this is our first one. And with that being our first one, we need to have somebody that can walk us through and hold our hand and make sure we do the first one right, and then we can roll with it. So do you guys want to approve that, architects? CDBG?
Move to approve the committee recommendation of BG consultants for the architect on the proposed fire station.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we kind of did the cart before the horse there, but, you know, someone brought up to me that we haven't really talked about the firehouse. You know, we've kind of talked about the fire station, but we haven't really made, said the council wants to put it on 20th Street, and we want it to be about this big, and then let the architect, architect take it from there. So I just want to make sure that, you know, you guys say 20th Street is where we want to put it, and, you know, Dave is talking about possibly eight bays, although the architect will probably adjust that based on what he sees our need, but you got, we need to at least have something in the minutes, that it's a consensus of council, that that's what we want before we give it to the architect. It needs to be a council decision.
The only problem I can really see is, there's, if something happens and there's all that traffic on 20th Street, that's going to be the problem.
Yeah, and we talked about those fire lights, and I did go to a community that had them, and, you know, they're pretty big, they have it on both ends, obviously, a big light makes people stop, and, so I know other people have had those.
I have been approached that there was concerns about it being on 20th Street with all the density on that area.
Yeah, especially certain times of day, or if there's sporting events, you know, the parking, you know, actually, yeah. I mean, it's centrally located for where we're at, but those are the other concerns that people have. You don't want, even though you have the lights and things, how many times have you seen people not stop? How many you see, you know, people are in the way? That's, that's going to be the challenge in getting these guys out and getting them going.
I think the type of lights that they put up, you'd notice them, and you would stop.
I, somebody did suggest another area that I hadn't really thought about, but I don't know if it's for sale or doable, but...
It's not property that we own?
No.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I want, B and G, if the, those guys would have a suggestion about the location that we're talking about even before, maybe they would have a suggestion to throw at us whether or not that is a good place to have...
I don't think that's the architect's role, is it?
Site selection?
Yeah.
Usually site selection, I think, they want you to have that carved, but you can ask, I guess.
You can pay architects to do site se, site analysis.
It's just kind of a scary deal.
What?
It's kind of scary up there.
Well...
You get in the middle, and when Landl's out and already had all the lights with all the cars, the lights aren't going to help them.
Well, maybe we should have had this discussion a couple months ago, so...
Even with the traffic, it's hard to beat the location for centrality and on a major street and fairly close to the highway.
It is an emergency.
How much do pushbars cost, pushbars cost for a car to get people out of the way? I mean, I don't know.
I mean, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just want to express, you know, that'll be one of the stumbling blocks, so, I mean, it isn't like just going to take it off the table. I'm just saying, we as a council need to express these things.
Oh, absolutely, that's why I said we need to, it's a cart before the horse, or the, we kind of did this in the wrong order, but I thought we had to have the discussion, and that's why I appreciate you guys sharing how you feel, even though we're in a position to now hire an architect. So, you know, the block you just mentioned on Broadway, I never thought about that.
That's, that's just...
It was just something that was broad, but I don't know.
There's a lot of those spitball locations.
Spitball.
Well, like old Marysville Motors Country cousin motel, I mean, that's a big, dumps right onto the highway.
I'm sorry, where?
The old Marysville Motors, where the country cousin motel was, that property dumps right onto the highway.
But that's not very big, though, is it?
It's bigger than it looks.
It goes, it goes all the way to the alley.
You mean where Bill Buck's, Bill Buck's property? Well, gosh, you guys.
We did it now.
I know. So we're going to hire this architect. What's our deadline on our architect to have plans submitted?
They need the preliminary by September 1.
Okay.
Which is not, it's, it's, it's more about how much it's going to cost.
I guess we can design it and think, you know, try to figure out. You think that that property up there is big enough where Bill Buck's property is?
It's bigger than it looks if you built into the hill, the full width. It's probably pricey because it's highway frontage, but if you're worried about getting trucks out quickly, if that's your priority, there's, you put a light there, stop the highway. I'm sure the state will allow it because they have those in other places on US highways.
You could also go over and build east of Habitat, too.
Well, that, well, that property is really pricey.
I'm just saying, there's, there's property there.
Well, you know, I like Genus, too, not to, you know, anything on yours, but that just, or this is that.
Can't get rid of it.
Is, it's, it's out of the...
That's why I preempted that, I have no idea.
They have to own so much ground.
I don't know if they're, they're still using the property, I don't know.
What'd you say? I'm sorry.
I don't know if Nordis is still using that property at all.
They are somewhat.
Are they somewhat?
The two sites that were brought up to me was Boss's building was one of them.
Yeah.
And, I mean, and that's on Main Street. I mean, it's not central to town, is anyone think it's bad? The nice thing is, it's a nice location when you have events down there, a fire station would be right in that area. And then the other one would be to the north of Crumbie's, well, where Danks used to be.
Oh, that corner lot?
Yeah.
It's only half block wide.
Yeah, and I don't think he's interested in selling it.
And that's a thing, would be, would he be willing to sell it or not?
Nordis' would be better. Nordis is probably use theirs to store cars in, I think.
Well, what are we going to do?
Maybe we should have Austin go in with some pricing? And yet, get a meeting together, get a meeting.
So I guess you need to ask about those three locations, if they're even willing to sell, and at what the price is.
Yeah.
You know, that's something we don't have built into the budget this year.
Yeah.
FYI. So whatever, if we have to buy property, that, we'll have to add that in.
If we buy property, is that included in our share of the price or not?
It's a, it's match.
Is it?
It's matching fund.
But we're probably going to use, based on the price of those fire stations that we looked at in the brochures, we're probably going to use the $600,000.
As I say, they're expensive, yeah.
When they have their pricing on there, that...
Yeah, some of them were crazy.
Well, they were huge, too.
For three bays. Yeah, so if we're really trying to shoot for an eight bay...
Yeah, well, you know, we need to be sure where we want to put it, and for what reason, so.
Bill Buck's property, right beside United Bank Drive-Thru, and Nordis Motors, and then Boss Motors, I guess.
And Walcott's.
Walcott's, yeah, up there by Habitat.
Yep.
We might as well just get off form.
That's what I wrote down.
Okay.
It doesn't hurt, I mean...
Yeah, and, and why don't Police and Fire, once he gets all these, these bids or these estimates, you guys want to come in and have a quick meeting before the council and see what you say?
Yeah.
Will you get dimensions of those, too, to make sure?
How big the lots are?
Yeah.
Lots sizes.
Yeah, how big they are, so we know if they'll fit.
Of which two?
All of them, I guess.
All of them.
Yeah, just to make sure, just so we know how much area we're talking about, and the prices will probably be according to the lot size, so, just to compare apples to apples, as we always say.
Some of those have been on the market a while, so, maybe they'll be helpful.
Okay, so Police and Fire, be prepared to have another meeting, and hopefully you can bring something on. We can go ahead and approve the architect. Deena says that we can have them help if they need to help us.
I mean, it's probably added cost, but I know that we, I've done it in the past, we went with the client and looked at four or five different properties with them, and then we assessed it according to their needs.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, we'll, we'll see if you guys can come up with a recommendation. All right, so we approved that for BG. So at the airport.
The next one up is the airport taxiways. Carla and I had a meeting with Don Rich and Phil Landl, as well as Rob Brady-Bush of Hall Brothers, to discuss improving the taxiways to the hangars at the airport. Rob proposed digging up the first 52 feet of taxi, taxiway, starting at the big concrete, and put down four inches of asphalt, then they would clean up the gravel along the rest of the project and put two-inch overlay over the existing surface. In conjunction with the project, Don would also be having the parking lot to the west overlaid, which is a city-owned parking lot. Another of his parking lots overlaid and patching on Airport Road. These projects have helped reduce the price of the airport taxiway project as far as doing them all, and a quantity bid, basically, is what it is. So they, the cost proposed for the airport is $29,378.84. As of the end of May, the airport revolving fund has $45,779.50. Don, Don would also, also talked about wanting to take out the south five feet of Airport Road and put concrete back, as there are some potholes that need to be fixed, and that's where his equipment goes in and out.
Pieces of plate over and right out.
Yeah, they put the plate, yeah.
I think they need to go to the center of the street, personally.
I think, how far, how far do you say? Six or eight feet?
Yes, that's working, because some of those go past the center of the street, it's up there.
I thought he said five feet, but I may, I would, he just wanted to talk to the council about it. He said he'd be willing to pay for it, so.
So you want to go back and sell it? How's the council feel? Have you guys driven Airport Road lately and saw the tin there that's covering the pothole? I assume the, when he said, I thought he said six to eight feet, but anyway, I don't know if that includes the laydown curb or not. I'm grateful that he's willing to do that. He also drove us by North Street where you were, had concerns, and he said he's going to fix that. He might make it concrete all the way across.
That's what I think is going to have to happen.
But, you know, again, he's not asking for any money for that, and, and he is overlaying the airport area that's ours, that he leases for a small fee, but at least he's doing, I think it was $92,000 to overlay that whole parking area. So with that being said, just, we would have to make a motion not to refund the money to Gary Howland, because last week, last meeting, we said we would. The 46,000, almost 46,000 does include that almost 17,000 from the Cooksey Trust. The AWAS and costs are taken out of the airport maintenance fund, in the general fund, rather than this fund. The only thing that goes into this airport revolving are the, are the crops, and the crop revenue is in there for 2019. The other thing is, if you remember from the budget, in the capital improvement plan, we had $44,500 allocated to the airport taxiways for next year using the FAA monies. So actually doing it ourselves is less than a 10% match of the FAA monies. So I think that's everything I wanted to communicate.
Well, I should note that the airport, Cemetery and Airport Committee hasn't met on this subject, which is a slight concern to me, being on the Cemetery and Airport Committee, as far as decision-making, when this is pretty much right in the wheelhouse of that committee. That's one thing. The other thing is, although I agree something needs done, I think almost $30,000 is a lot to spend on what's a temporary fix. I mean, I think part of the overall project going to concrete is the only real solution. I don't think, I'm, I've been on council long enough now, I'm pretty much over the idea of throwing asphalt on things.
Well, he said that the asphalt that's down there was laid in the 1970s, that's how long ago it was laid down.
It looks like it's from the 1870s, but yeah, it's really bad, and I, I mean, I'm okay with us doing some temporary repairs until the whole project gets done, but I feel like a two-inch overlay of what amounts to, basically, a gravel road is a Band-Aid. I mean, it's, it's pretty rough. I think that's too much to spend on a Band-Aid. I'm okay with the Band-Aid sometimes, but that's a pretty friggin' expensive Band-Aid.
Come on.
And like I said, I think that, I mean, who else is on the Cemetery and Airport Committee? You off the top of your head?
I am.
You are?
I'm not sure. I'm trying to think who the other one is.
Before jumping on it, I kind of like the idea of us being able to walk around and talk about it, and, you know.
Well, the cemetery...
It's a lot of money.
It's not on me.
These are the appointed.
Yeah, these are the actual boards.
Are you on that committee?
It should be online, you can look online.
Yeah.
At the website.
It's a good, it's a good committee.
No, not, this is for the, of the council, the committee of the council, rather than the outside board.
About the airport?
Well, if that asphalt was laid 50 years ago, I mean, that's a long-term band-aid. That's not just... And the fact that he's gonna dig out that first 52 feet and put in four inches asphalt, and then he's gonna put another four inches on top, right?
Two inches. Four inches, and then two inches all the way.
So, the six inch at that 52 feet.
Yep.
And then two-inch overlay the rest away.
Yeah, Terry, you, me, and Jason are on the Cemetery and Airport Committee.
Didn't even know I was on the cemetery.
That's why we need to meet.
I didn't know.
Yeah.
Well, I do think we're in a situation where it is deteriorated and it is dangerous, and they are pulling their planes up with, they're literally pulling their planes up because of the situation of the asphalt. You have to remember, though, when you think of that 17,000, I mean, the cost to the city is literally $12,000 for something that could last 15 to 20 years.
I did have a conversation with Don, just, he wanted me to pass along his sentiments of that he feels this was, this is a good way to go, to, so that planes can go in and out, and this would be helpful, to say the least, to help the taxiways at this time.
I guess when I look at it as, if they who donated the initial money are okay with it, that it goes to asphalt rather than concrete, and we just have to contribute $12,000, I think it's a great win for community, or city right now, but it's your guys' call.
I do too. I think so.
Well, if you want to do it, the first motion should be to not refund the $16,979 to Gary Howland before you say to accept this bid. We haven't refunded it, have we, Cindy? Okay, so, that was our motion last week, our last council meeting.
And he knows that we're not gonna refund it.
Gary.
Gary does, okay.
Gary and Don?
Yeah, Gary and Don, we've been talking about this.
I just want to double check. I know Gary, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so obviously he's good?
Well, I would need a motion to not refund that money.
I'll make a motion that we do not refund the money to Gary Howland, that we were going to refund.
That we approved last week, last meeting? Is there a second?
I will do that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to reiterate, I think it's bad governance for us to have committees to do, that our job is overseeing these kinds of things, and here we are making a decision and reversing a decision, when our committee hasn't even addressed it. That's all.
So noted. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to not refund that money. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven-one. And then I would need a motion to proceed with the bid for the $29,000 to come out of the Airport Revolving Fund, to proceed with that. Anybody want to make that motion?
No, I'll make the motion to do it.
To accept that bid for $29,378 to do it?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? I want to reiterate.
I, no, I'm just gonna, you know, put it out there. We gotta stop doing band-aids somewhere, so, I don't know. I just feel like it's, again, a lot more band-aids, and there may be a place for it, but we sure use the heck out of them.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd have to agree with the band-aid part of Councilman Fry's statement, but as you said, 50 years is not a band-aid. Everybody'd be able to use that for, for a couple of generations on an airport. There aren't semis driving on it.
Well, that leads my next question, is that we need to put a weight limit, so, because I saw a big semi truck, but were you still there with me when we saw it?
Yeah, it was a, the truck that refills the spring.
Sprayer, right?
Yeah.
And we need to put a sign.
Put a stop to that.
That limits the weight to go on that road. And they can pull their plane up to the gate, but they shouldn't be driving on that road. Don't you agree? Or don't you guys agree?
Yeah.
We should put a weight limit, you know, we have that fence, and we can say, the semi can go to there, but it shouldn't go beyond. So, okay, so first off, I have a motion. Did I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. To go ahead and proceed with this bid, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Two? Six-two? Okay, six-two. And then, do we need to make a motion to put a weight limit on there?
I have to see if it's legal first. I'll check with our engineer, with Olson, they usually know what airports can do.
Yeah. Well, we should find out if that's legal, anyway, to know that they do that. And, yeah, weight limit, so you'll find out with Olson about that?
Yep.
Regarding weight limits? All right. Moving ahead?
Yep. Next, the C clip bids were opened on June 19th by KDOT. The low bid of $1,433,820 came from Bryant of Halsted. Combined with construction engineering, the city's match will be $557,000. Upon approval of this project, the attached document states KDOT would like their portion by August 8th. Let's see, I did the math on how much more the next, it's a little over expected of the project. Say, we're digging around $600,000. Four? See, uh, 612, I believe, is what me and Carla kind of figured.
Yeah, I think it was 1.6. So, it's gonna end up about, well, about 1.6 we had. Our other engineering was about 1.22, I think.
1.26, 1,200.
1.26, and this is 1.22, so we paid almost $250,000 in engineering.
Right.
And then you add it to the million.
Four, yeah.
Yeah, so, add the 250, so, yeah, 683, we're gonna end up paying.
Yep. And these funds would come out of sales tax fund.
I move that we accept the low bid of $1,433,820 from Bryant and Bryant of Halsted to come out of the sales tax fund for the C clip.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, all right.
All right, next up is the contract between us and KDOT. I looked it over, and looked over the last KDOT agreement for transportation alternative is pretty much exactly right on, they just curtailed it to this project at Seventh and Broadway. It's their standard transportation alternative contract. This contract needs to be approved to move forward on the project. Currently, CES has submitted our field checks, plans, and waiting on actual field inspections.
Have they, did they do the design?
Yeah, they're doing the design right now.
Do you remember how much that was? And is that, that, is it including the 114, is it? Because design is separate?
I think design is separate.
Design's usually not included.
Right.
And then after we assign this, then we'll hire a construction engineer, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, once they set a bid date, and we have all our design work taken care of, we then go in and do the construction engineer selection.
So, you don't remember how much we approved for that design engineer?
I remember we approved the bid. I don't remember exactly how much.
Okay, but that was CES that did that?
Yes.
Okay. And the only thing is, you know, it does say on 49 that anything above that 114,000 is our risk, so anything coming in up and above that is ours. But they, I think they're contributing, what, 91? So, that's pretty substantial.
Eighty-twenty, yeah, so, yeah, they got the 80%.
I was looking right there, is this?
91, 626, yeah.
Yeah, that's what they're contributing, so that's substantial that they're contributing. So?
Move to approve the KDOT contract for Seventh and Broadway improvements.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, all right. All right, this one we did right. Go ahead.
All right, so, we got a single bid. We went out to bid for Phase Two of the restaurant porch, which is the upper half columns and the soffits and all that molding. And it's a historic site, so we typically have issues finding somebody who's qualified and experienced with historical locations. So, we got a single bid. It's from a reputable contractor, somebody we worked with before, and do you want to?
See it?
See it.
Do you want to see it? So, it's one bid. I told Austin, Kestner House is a little different, it's hard for us to find people that will do the specific work for the Kestner House. It's not like a heating and air conditioning thing. It is, you know, the type of work that we've required there. You know, last time we had the spindles, and remember, we had to try to find somebody that could make the spindles? But when he said he only had one bid, I said, well, ask the council if they want to see the one bid, or if they want to wait and wait, I guess, wait.
And if somebody's done work for us.
Yes.
Of similar.
Yes.
For, for.
Yep.
Did we get more than one bid for the spindles, or was that just?
We got.
I don't think we did.
We got two bids for the spindles.
Didn't we have Roar the Handyman do it?
We had, yeah, we had Roar the Handyman do it. We had another bid from JD Construction, and they decided not to submit this time.
Oh, okay. That was, it was, that other bid wasn't significantly higher than Roar the Handyman, do you remember?
No, it was a couple thousand more.
Not significantly, okay. So, what do you guys want to do?
Well, this is a different situation.
It's not a truck.
We are under, I mean, just, I think I wrote it down there, this is a grant project, we're under a timeline, not to put any screws to it, but just laying it out as it is.
Because we can't apply for another Heritage Trust Fund grant till we finish this one. So, so, does the council desire to see it, or do you want to?
Move to approve the loan, or see the loan bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're gonna see it.
No envelope.
Change to C bid.
I don't, no, 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 nope, I did not. There you are. This is the bid, and, just to save time, I did put the same contract we had before, just updated the scope of work.
Do you remember what we estimated this to cost?
This, combined with the last phase, brings us to about $5,050 over the estimated cost.
$1,500?
Yeah, $5,050.
$5,050.
Yes. Yeah, just the project itself, there was.
Heritage Trust Fund grant estimate?
Yeah, yes, and actually, $300, so $5,350, because carpet costs a little bit more than I expected as well, so, $5,350 more with these combined Phase One and Phase Two. And the wood is a little deteriorate, more deteriorated, more than when we put the estimate together.
How long ago did we initially apply for this?
We applied, this is the third time we've sent in the application, slightly updating the estimates as we go. So, this is actually the third time we've.
For the same project?
For the same project.
This is the final phase?
Yes, final phase.
So, the balance would come out of the Kestner Block Fund?
Yes, and we would get reimbursed, and I'm going to, he just put most of the carpet in today, he's got the, two handrails to put up, and I think put the rest of the carpet over the final step, and I can submit for a partial reimbursement from the Heritage Trust Fund.
For the last phase?
For the.
He says that the final, like Phase Two? Or Phase, is that Phase One or Phase Two?
Phase One, this one's Phase Two.
But we've applied through, you said that we applied?
No, no, the grant overall, so Phase One, Phase Two, this is the third time we've applied, because this is basically just one project to Heritage Trust Fund, but it's been split into two.
Two phases.
Two phases. And, yeah, we just hadn't been approved in previous applications, so this was our, the time that we actually got approved.
So, we have money in the Kestner Block Fund?
Yes.
There's money to cover all this.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and we're gonna get reimbursed, hopefully, I don't know how long it takes for them to send us a check, but I'm applying for reimbursement.
Move to have Roar the Handyman, or Phase Two of the Kestner House, no, yeah, Kestner House Restaurant, they'll get it right yet, Kestner House for $16,750.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, all right.
All right, next one up is Neptune Software Water Meter Purchase. We talked about how we were going with Neptune meters in the past. There's a single supplier, they don't cross boundaries, so we have one, one single source. Included is a quote for the software and equipment necessary to implement a new radio read system for our water meters. The system that we currently have, through Census, is being phased out due to the cost of update, being phased out on our side. Census is moving forward with a different radio frequency and new, different equipment. The signal allows us to read the meters is being changed by the company, which requires new equipment, and we just purchased a $6,000 handheld, which is typically used for people walking by houses and not driving by houses, to pick that up. With the new Neptune system, they have made their equipment backwards compatible, so that as technology advances, the equipment that reads the meters doesn't have to change. Also, we will be able to read meters with our own devices, like a tablet or a smartphone, and they, all it is, is an attachment that syncs up with the smartphone or tablet to read meters, which is great. There's other companies that do that, Census not, has yet to adopt that technology. Also, the quote includes 440 meters to replace a portion of the 1,675 customers, most of which use Census meters. In this order, we are replacing most of our larger meters, up to two-inch, as this was recommended by KRWA to help alleviate some of our water loss. We do have some three-to-four inch meters, but Neptune recommended that we wait until they reveal their new large, larger non-moving parts meters sometime in the next year and a half. Currently, their meters are only, for that size, are only compound, which have moving parts. And there's a, there's definitely a cost difference. For instance, we bought a two-inch compound from Census, and they were about $1,300 bucks for a two-inch. Well, the ones with the non-moving parts, what was that, $700 or $800? It just reduces the cost without the moving parts and the. Uh, and it just reduces the cost with, without the moving parts and the, the compound, uh, sections of it. So, uh, we recommend that you approve the, the quote for municipal supply for software meters, uh, hundred, uh, for a hundred and forty-five, two eighty-five, to, to come out of Water Utility Reserve.
So, um, so where we're replacing a fourth of the meters?
Mm-hmm.
It's, and those fourth of the meters carry, you know, about how much of our usage?
Uh, well, the two inch meters, the larger ones carry quite a bit, 'cause it, I mean, it's the car wash is the, the, um, I named off a whole bunch of ones.
Well, you told me that Walmart, well, you said Walmart and Tintin have three inch and Surf has four.
Right.
But the car wash has two inch.
Right. So some, the two inch, I mean, the, the two, the larger meters are the, the larger users, at least the, the bigger at-once demands, um, when they, when they need water, they, they need water, so that's why they have the bigger, the bigger uses.
I would think we'd have more risk of water loss on the bigger ones than the smaller ones.
Right, that's why we're replacing the bigger ones.
But we're not replacing the three or four inch?
Because of the co- because there's, there's fo- there's four, there's four, uh, three, uh, three and four inch meters, two three inch, uh, two four inch, and?
That's all?
Yeah, that's it. Those, the ones that I named off were the ones.
So, there's only two that are three inch?
Uh-huh.
And two that are four inch? Landals is not a?
They spread it between multiple meters.
The school.
The school has like a one and a, there's a place for a one and a half inch meter, um, and what else did they do? Um, they're, they're, yeah, they're not of the three or four inch ones.
So, uh, Landals and Valley Vet and the school, are they all part of those that you're gonna replace?
Yeah.
Those are big volumes?
All, the two inch meters are all the two inch meters we have.
Oh, that's, it covers all, all two inch?
Yep.
Okay. So that should hit a significant volume?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then, you know, in our budget, we had seventy-five thousand for the next three years, so that will pick up the remaining ones, you think?
Yeah, yeah, the, um, it'll probably, I did, I did the math with the price, if the price remains the same, it'll, it'll be between seventy-five and eighty thousand dollars.
Each year?
Each year.
For the next three years, to get them all?
Yep.
Are the Neptunes a good meter?
Yes.
I mean, we thought the Census were good meters, and now we're changing them out and putting Neptune's in, that's why?
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking, we're not gonna go four more year, or ten or twelve more years and then switching sides again to a different meter again.
Right, and the non-moving parts i- is the most important portion of this. Where, right now, we have moving parts, um, they wear down. Uh, these have a guarantee, uh, without reading it, um, the typical guarantee that I've been read, uh, is a ten-year straightforward, you, your ten, it's gonna, it's gonna work for ten years, your battery in your antennas is, is gonna work for twenty.
We, uh, put Neptune in our new water lines, right?
Yes.
Last year?
Yep.
And it, have we done, have they worked well?
Oh, yeah.
And so if we're replacing only four hun- a fourth of the meters, what do, how do we read the other three fours?
Uh, so we're gonna keep the Census, uh, software until we phase it out.
So you're gonna keep it for four years?
Yeah, so basically what's gonna happen is our utility billing is, um, right now it gets all the readings from one source. Um, they're going to help us set it up to where we'll pull it from Census and we'll pull it from Neptune and converge into, uh, our billing system. And so, as we go, uh, get these four hundred and forty in, and then next year we'll, they'll increase that ratio over to Neptune, and then, yeah.
Are they, but won't they have to do drive-by, do a double drive-by in the city?
Not a double, they'll have both, both of them right there.
Oh, they have read them no matter where they are, so it's one drive?
Yep. 'Cause it'll be two different, they'll have the normal Census equipment, uh, and then we'll have the new, uh, Neptune, um, readers.
So, um, is that, so when we replaced all the meters in oh-six?
Uh-huh.
Were those Census meters?
Yes.
Okay, so, to your question, it was in oh-six?
We bought them in oh-six.
Oh-six.
Yeah. Yeah. We, yeah.
So, I mean, at least we've had them for over ten years.
Right. Yep.
I just, like I said, n- I mean?
Technology, to be honest, technology, ten years, that's a long time to have it.
Those, those, well, it's really not the tech, I mean, the technology, yes, but it's really, the moving parts i- is what holds it back.
Right.
In the meter technology. It's, um, those, uh, wear out and wear down, um, so it's, depending on your hardness of the water, it goes faster or slower, uh, as far as wearing down.
The Neptunes that we put in were moving parts too?
Non-moving parts.
Non-moving parts?
Yes.
So, and we haven't had any problems with that? Is that just one year we put Neptune in, or two years we put Neptune in?
The one year we put in with that?
Just North Street?
Just North Street, yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Like saying, the next five years, what's this gonna cost for these meters?
Eighty, well, we have in the budget eighty-five thousand a year besides?
For how many years?
It'd have to be three more years, 'cause we're putting in twenty-five percent this year.
Just wondered if we didn't buy any meters and just put a meter reader on right now with full benefits, we could do it for a third of that?
It, it wouldn't?
And forget all this modern stuff?
It wouldn't help the meters at all. Um, the water loss is due to the slowing of meters.
Or a leak in the line?
See, that's a big deal, ten million dollar water loss, we're trying to find that. So my, no. But you're saying what, how could we avoid getting new meters?
Just by hiring a meter reader and leaving our meters like they are now?
Walk in the streets instead of a radio read?
Oh, yeah.
So how long does it take them to do it now?
Uh, four hours?
Yeah, four to five, depends if we have some that don't pick up.
Yeah.
And it used to take Linda the entire month, so then we have to hand key them in.
Yep.
If you walk?
But she didn't make eighty-five thousand a year either.
No, absolutely not, but then we have room for error, for keying errors.
If you're gonna pay the meter reader eighty-five thousand, I will, um?
You wanna be the meter reader?
I'll be the meter reader.
You, so, um?
I'm the cold in the eyes.
I guess I'm kinda going back to this estimate, so if you take out the twelve thousand for the data collector, it is a one hundred and thirty-two thousand, and you think for the other ones?
If we, it wouldn't, I, if we go with seventy-five to eighty thousand, it would be not the, the four hundred and forty, it would be the, I think I brought it down to three hundred and some. I, 'cause we, I, we originally talked about a five-year plan of getting it in there, so the seventy-five to eighty would put us at a five-year plan. Uh, so one, one this year, and then four more years.
So, just for a little satisfaction here, and by the time when we get all of this in, and we're actually capturing all the water?
Yep.
How long do you think it'll take it to pay for itself?
Um, well, depends on how slow the meters are. And KRWA had, had recommended, as we take them out, that they would test the meters, just to make sure, uh, to see what, uh, if this was causing us water loss. Uh, the cost savings would also be in the fact the longevity of the meters, uh, themselves, uh, would, um, would keep them in the ground for twenty years. Rather than the recommended for moving parts of ten years.
That's a big difference.
We have the eighty-five thousand coming out of the operating account, where this money's coming out of that.
Right, 'cause we, we, we didn't budget sp- uh, for this this year, we, it's been in conversation, um, I think, end of last year being, beginning of this year.
Yeah. Well, it looks like, you know, we'll wear down our reserve between water lines and these new meters in twenty-twenty-two, so we're gonna have to plan accordingly.
Right. I agree.
I don't, it, this year, we don't, we had those spare parts coming out of the water utility, right, for fifty thousand, out of the budget?
Spare parts?
Yeah, remember, he had, he wanted to buy spare parts for some kinda? It was in the budget.
Wasn't that sewer?
Sewer, sewer, that was sewer. The spare pumps.
Spare pumps? I thought that was in the last page of the budget, but I?
Yeah, that, that was?
So you don't think there was anything coming out of Water Utility Reserve this year, or next year, or, yeah, or next year, other than water lines next year, probably?
Though, I think we put the water lines in operating, but, um?
This year, but, and, uh, starting next year, I think our, our operating balance is gonna be low enough to ninety-day carryover that we're gonna have to start using the reserve for it.
Okay. Um, yeah.
So, with that being said, you know, you don't wanna start a project like this that we can't fund, so, you know, what you need to remember is, where it's a hundred and forty-five now, but it's another three hundred thousand, is that the right number?
Correct.
So, it's a hundred and forty-five thousand now, it's another three hundred. Your point is a good point, Bobby, about when it pays itself back.
Mm-hmm.
A million dollar, ma- million dollar, million gallon water loss was what percent of our?
The, the, the ten million, the, well, the water loss was at twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent?
Yep.
It's a lot of water.
Mm-hmm.
Cause don't they allow us a certain amount of percentage?
No, they, um, well?
Well, they aim, they say you should aim for like twelve to fifteen.
Yeah.
The average is around sixteen to seventeen.
So, yeah. I mean, a person walking around's not gonna be able to, I mean, they're just gonna be gathering a little data, they're not gonna be able to find and really record, report the leaks or anything.
This also sets us up, um, uh, this is one of the companies that, um, allows the same meter you put in for radio, for radio read these ones, uh, for driving around. We could also fl- uh, not, not fl- well, you kinda flip a switch like, just for, uh, and install a couple antennas around town. Don't take a couple as literal, uh, 'cause I don't know how many antennas, um, and, and we can read from the office.
That would be so.
So, it's, that's, that's also a cu- a future cost savings right there.
Yeah, no doubt.
Okay. It looks like our water sales are about eight hundred and forty, eight thousand estimated for this year, and so, if, say we saved ten percent, take it from twenty-five to fifteen, you know, it would gain us eighty-five thousand a year, if it does it, and it might not catch it immediately, it might not be, it might be the last fifth year that we find where we're losing the gallons.
Right.
Madam Mayor, your confidence is that it's these defective meters that were taken out is what's, where the leak is?
Well, you've been talking to KRWA, and is that what they said?
The, one of the big things they tell, tell you to, is replace the larger meters first, which is what we plan to do.
Because they're defective.
Be, because they, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause they sense, and they slow down, yeah.
That's the term.
They're not catching everything, yes.
They're letting more water through than what they're registering water's going through.
Right.
So, actually, instead of a hundred and forty-five thousand project, you're really thinking about four hundred and forty-five thousand, so it's, you know, it's?
And this is about, this is about what we leased, uh, 'cause we leased purchased, uh, this whole, the whole project, the last time, uh, paying interest and everything on it.
In oh-six?
Yeah, that's when they started?
How much was it?
The lease, oh, they were paying forty thousand a year, uh, for ten years.
So they just paid them off in twenty-seventeen?
Yeah.
I should see that in here somewhere.
We made the first payment in oh-six, even though we didn't start putting them until seven?
Well, it'd be in transmission, right?
I, I think so.
What it made?
Well, I think sixteen was the last payment.
Right, we have capital outlay of seventy thousand, but?
Then it would've been in that, I guess.
But, though, um, in twenty-fifteen, we spent two hundred and ninety-three thousand, although we spent two hundred and sixty-five thousand to do that water tower, you know, when we cleaned all the water towers?
Mm-hmm.
So, although it says zero, zero, capital outlay in, uh, twenty-fourteen?
That's not the line it's coming from, I don't know, I'd have to?
It would have to be transmission and distribution, wouldn't it?
What's the next one?
Well?
Commercial and general? It's not, what is it, I don't think it'd be in production, but it, it's too, it won't be in?
Anyway, yeah, I, that's, that's how it was set up, was a ten-year. We just found the lease document in there.
So, big project, uh, I don't think we understood that it was gonna be almost half a million dollars, so?
Over the last twenty years?
Or ten, I think you can say ten, based on the last, well, I'm just saying, last when we, um, technology standpoint, last one lasted, you know, ten to eleven.
But we can continue losing water, we can step up and try to save it.
Water's a precious commodity.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if we find it.
Thank you. All over the world.
So, it will, you know, over time, pull your reserve down, so?
We do have things dropping off, don't we? So we can add to the reserve.
Not in water.
Not in water.
No, that's that refunding debt series, we just refunded, so, we pay that till, I think, twenty-thirty.
Cause I know this year, we got the water main project on Seventeenth Street.
Uh-huh.
And then we'll have?
Jenkins from Seventeenth to Twenty.
But that's coming out of the operating account.
Yeah, I know, but just things, you know? She was talking about expenses, and then in Fifth, and you got, what, Fifteenth Street you wanna do, from?
See, our refunding series does mean twenty?
I think Laramie was the next?
Yeah.
Possibility, yeah.
Across the north, or the?
Fifteenth to Twentieth.
Twentieth, yeah.
I think that's the section of town we've been working on.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that debt isn't gonna finish till twenty-thirty.
Yeah.
So, but that's the only water debt we have, well, no, we have a doc, water rehab, add in twenty-thirty-three, that's not any better, so, and the other two are sewers. So, just wanna make sure you guys are all in line, that that's what it's gonna do. I know you like reserves, Todd?
It's true.
You can never have too many reserves, isn't that your line?
I've never said that. I never said you couldn't have too many.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I think I have heard that, but anyway. So, do you wanna proceed with this? I mean, our, what are our, our options? Our options is to proceed with it or not, and, um, we've kinda started the process. I don't think we evaluated the whole thing when we put those Neptunes in last year. I don't think we had this discussion when we decided to try out the Neptunes on the water line, that it was gonna be a half a million dollar project, but that's what it's gonna be over the next five years. You said, just to clarify, you said this is a single supplier, so these are the only people in this area that, that can sell these products?
Yes, the, nobody, nobody will come?
That's why there's not a second bid?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, they, they have territories.
They have the territory for this product?
Yes.
Okay, and that's who we bought the first ones from?
Yes.
Okay. All right, council, what do you wanna do? Spend a half a million dollars? No, I'm just kidding, we just have to spend a hundred and forty-five thousand today.
This time.
Water's not, I mean, it's not gonna get any less, I mean, the use of water and the abundance of water, there's only so much water we have, you know, we might as well be able to control it the best we can.
Try to start.
Yeah, that's the way I look at it, because, I mean, we can let it leak, we can let it go, and just say, oh, you know, well, wait till the next council, we'll let them take care of it, you know? So, I think that's been done too many times, whether we like it or not, you know, on certain things. I don't, I like the idea of spending that much money, but I also don't, I don't wanna be without water either.
Well, you know, we find the leaks, you know?
Yeah.
We may be able, may be able to save rate, changing rates, raising rates on people too, if we can find some of this water loss.
Exactly, that's a big part.
Yeah, I mean, we're replacing the, we're replacing meters, not the lines, other than our major water line.
You can tell, I mean, they should be able to tell with the meters.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Move to approve the bid, municipal water.
140, say the big number there.
For 145,285.
Coming out of the reserve.
Water utility reserve.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, 7-1. All right, you want to, you want to hire somebody to walk the street?
Water meter in here, say 50,000 a year. Meter reader.
What are you going to pair, a meter reader?
About 80 grand a year.
Yeah.
You save their money.
Okay, the only other thing is, I think we need to have another budget workshop, and I don't think we need the department heads, I think it's just for us to go through it. So maybe July 15th, on Monday night, your thoughts?
I'm not sure what I have on July 15th.
We got to look in the book.
It's a Monday night, and, because we need to have a final budget, you know, the 1st of August, so. I don't think the department heads have to be there, though. I think it's just us.
Okay.
Unless you disagree.
I don't know, no, I don't know anything, I don't have my schedule for July 15th, so.
We'll just, let us know on message.
You want to, you guys think you're okay Monday, the 15th, tentatively?
I don't have, my phone would be out.
Should be.
Okay, well, aim for that. If not, we'll have to do, uh, we'll probably just do 5:15, because last time we have a lot. What time can you get here?
5:30? 5:45, realistically.
5:45, okay.
Well, I mean, it's 40 minutes away, it gives me 5 minutes of margin.
We're just making for 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock? Actually, on the 15th, I can't make it anyway, I'm at a kid's doctor's appointment.
You're so cute.
Sorry, so no, do whatever, I'm not going to be here.
So let's do 5:15, we need to get it done.
2:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to work. Okay, that's the only thing I have for you. Anybody else have anything for Austin?
Just where are we at with the cell phone ordinance thing that we had talked about?
Greg was putting the, well, one, they're doing a 30-foot on that, and then you guys requested to include fees on the cell phone, on the small cell, so we sent that off to Greg to take care of that.
Well, so, you know, I know we keep referencing Manhattan, so I pulled up Manhattan's, and they said the deadline was April 15th for, to publish written local aesthetic standards in compliance with the ruling. FCC said that.
Um, I just, I didn't, I didn't have that deadline. I don't, yeah.
It was just, it says the FCC ruling came out September 26th. It's at the very top of what, you know, what with the commission discussed in Manhattan.
So April, like, just passed, or April just?
Yeah, April 15th, 2019. And that, and now the weird thing is, remember the people called us, they sent us an email 2018, and they asked us what aesthetic standards we had? It's because the deadline was April 15th.
The ship has already sailed.
So I don't even know if we can still have any standards in towards any fees. Did you know about that date?
Not April 15th, though.
Well, as it says, finally, the FCC has given cities until April 15th, 2017, to publish their written local aesthetic standards in compliance with the ruling.
Because we got, I mean, we talked about this whole thing, and then Craig sent an email that he was sent about regarding, regarding, from Verizon Wireless, I think.
Well, yeah, but this one, when he says they're asking what our ordinances are regarding this, that was on April 18th. So, I guess, I don't know if we're dead in the water and can't get any fees and can't put any stipulations, I don't know. Do you want to talk to Craig about it? I mean, if it was, came from Manhattan. Yeah, and, so we, you know, we started talking about this in 2018, when you first brought up, so it's sad if we missed it.
So is that the permanent deadline, or is there going to be a chance if it opens up again?
I had, you know.
It would hurt to still try to have it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to.
Continue with what we.
Well, we need to find out if we can do anything. If we can't do anything, we don't have to spend time on our ordinance.
That's a federal ruling.
Yeah, it's all over, every league of municipalities in other states and everywhere else.
That April 15th was the deadline? Did you just figure that out?
Yeah, it's everywhere, yeah, you're, it's completely, it's must, must, must.
So we can kind of forget it.
There's attorney general opinions from other states saying it had to have been done by April 15th.
So the ULDC thing still is playable, or no?
No, the ULDC thing is totally separate from small cell towers, yeah. So anyway. So I guess you need to talk to Craig, if that is true, we don't need to keep working on it, but it's really sad, we missed an opportunity. Or, yeah, an opportunity, I wonder if that means we can't, they can pay either, new revenue district. Okay, if he just looks at Manhattan, we'll be good. All right, Cindy, you want to talk about?
Just revamping our dog, our dog ordinance a little bit, just because we've spent so much money doing DNA tests and keeping dogs at the vet, and it's not proving whether they're vicious or they're not, and we can't tag the dogs, because we tell them they can't have them in town, but they are in town.
So then nobody has, I've seen some when I was going door to door.
And, and we just got documentation again that says it does not hold up in court. You cannot do breed specific, it will not hold up in court. Denver threw it out, just everywhere, the lawyers association said you cannot do breed specific. They just want us to go back to our vicious dog, which we do have.
So, and we, we have vicious dogs in two, what?
It would just take, eliminating the part where it says that, that's not, just to eliminate that part that made that breed specific, because we already have vicious in there. Just because I'm cheap and I don't like to waste the money, we're going to gain another.
Where, the other one where it says vicious, chapter two, I said article two.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, there it is, vicious animals. So on 2, 215, we say, you know, vicious animals are defined as somebody who attacks or injures, injures or bites another person or domestic animal, or threatens and dangers the health of the well-being. And then they file a complaint with the police department, is this still what you want?
That's what, I mean, and we can act.
The municipal court makes the decision?
That's how, yeah, has always been, yeah.
So then on the pit bull ones, article three, it just says it's prohibited, are you trying to pull?
Well, I would just pull, I don't have, I would just pull the paragraph where it says, any, any pit bulldog, just that C, all you got to do is pull C. The rest of it was already in there, they added C at a different time.
Mary's go out at C.
Mary's will add at C, but we just have to pull C.
But then you don't want the title, you don't want the title.
Right, and change the title, correct.
And what, you should change it to vicious dogs?
Or dangerous dogs.
Dangerous animals, is that what it says?
It says vicious dogs.
No, here, I mean, what's the rest?
This is talking about.
Prohibited animals.
Prohibited animals, see, it's not.
Prohibited animals.
It should just say prohibited animals, you know?
And you pulled the pit bull?
And I did talk to Officer Oldy about it, and he said, his last dog bite was from a black lab, because he followed him home and he was fine till he got on his porch, and the dog was doing his job. It's now my porch, you stay away.
Now, do you want to leave these other ter, you know?
No, those are all definitions of what.
Oh, different types of pit bull.
Because there is no such thing as, yeah, there is no such thing as a pit bull. There, that's not really a breed.
A term, okay.
It's just a slang for dogs, because a lot of our vets are, they just don't list those things, because most of them are mixed anyway, and that's how they got into town to start with. And then we've had it go to the judge, and the judge threw it out, so we're wasting DNA.
So if you change it to any dangerous dog, who makes that decision? The judge?
Or the policeman.
The policeman makes the decision?
There are more, I can look up more details on the dangerous, they did send me, what they consider dangerous or vicious.
Even though it says vicious here, you want it to be vicious, or you want it to be dangerous?
We can be either or. I just, I'll work on it if you are agreeable.
Are you guys okay to have a bring that to the next?
I just didn't want to work on it if you didn't want me to do it.
Bring me the part of it.
Bring this.
So do it.
So then at least we could get them tagged, and we'd know where they are.
Yes, everybody's saying yes.
Whatever works, so we're not having to pay these fees all the time.
All right, so we'll work on it, I just wanted, I didn't want to work on it if, if you were interested.
Okay. We will move on to standing committees and street. I just want to say, we had that meeting, six of the, eight of you guys were at that meeting for 11th Road, Keystone and 12th Road, and I do want to say one thing, is that they really believe that if Austin sends out a letter on behalf of the city, that they think we have read it. So from, I think from now on, anything that you've sent out to the community, we have to have before you send it out, because otherwise, they assume we have. I mean, that was what I got from that audience, they thought we had all seen it. The other thing is, Austin and I met and, with Hall Brothers, and they estimated a price much lower, we're using asphalt, and they also talked about, they want to offer a bid when we do our street projects to, for, you know, they, so they want to know why our city hasn't done any asphalt for years, and they would like the opportunity to bid asphalt for these street projects. We might decide not to do it, but they want the opportunity to bid. And, you know, I think we should, they're a local company, they said they've been in business for 100 years, and they haven't done any projects here in many years. So, one, I think we should, when we do our street projects, we should bid both concrete and asphalt, and we consider, you know, 11th Road, Keystone and 12th, I mean, if they can come in at one-third the price, a concrete street, that's much more doable than, and, you know, I'm excited on these streets on CDBG, because that's the first street I'm going to look at to see if it qualifies, and, you know, I know Ellen mentioned that we can have a CDBG out, and we can have a second one out, but we can't have a third one until number one's finished. So we're going to, but our CDBG is going to only last till 2023, so we're bidding the first one in 2020, so we need to make sure that we utilize as much of that money as possible till 2023.
Oh, Mayor, with the asphalt, I mean, we have to redo it every, much more often than concrete.
Okay, so what, what he said is that he was going to do a 12-inch, 8-inch, what's a 8-inch when he puts the asphalt, the concrete, what he's calling?
He was, he was going to do 12-inch cement stabilization on the base.
On the bottom eight inches.
He would take 12 inches, go 12 inches down on the base, include dry cement to stabilize it, and then put a 4-inch overlay on, on top.
I think I mentioned something, my lack of fandom of asphalt earlier, but I feel like, yeah, we'll save, we'll pay a third as much, but we'll do it five times as often. So I don't think, like, we'll come out, I think they're, I think they, us, everyone has vastly underestimated the quality of the base out there.
Well, that's why they're going to put that 12-inch in.
Yeah, I, a really thick Band-Aid.
Well, their point, their point being is that, you know, on a, on a asphalt street, you can put another overlay on it, and their example was North 11th Road.
Then we'll keep paying them every five years.
Yeah, but a 2-inch overlay is better than when we, when, when the concrete cracks, you have to redo the whole concrete road. And, and they said that they put North 11th Road in '05, so it's been 14 years, and, for North 11th Road. Now, they did mention that it's probably time to put a 2-inch overlay on that, and I don't know how much that's going to cost, same way with the North Street, but they also emphasized that at that North Street, that when KDOT was involved with that, because it was 35% of it was an economic development grant, and they didn't require the base, because they didn't anticipate the weight or the usage of that road back in '05. So now the usage is so much, they would never have approved the base they have in it, or the lack of base now, based on the traffic that's on it, but at, in '05, it was KDOT approved. So now we have to deal with, the usage has changed from, since '05.
I, I've seen some highway projects in the last handful of years, US 77 North and South, that aren't holding up worth, you know, a hoot. And so, and those were probably supremely engineered by the state. My confidence in that asphalt work has really been diminished over time. I, I feel like, yeah, we'll save money now, but we're just going to spend it, we're just going to spend it, spend a little more, and a little more, and a little more.
Well, I think, I think, I think $900,000 is more findable than 2.7 mil.
Right, but are we, but you know what is even more findable? Chip and seal, and we see where that got us. We can chip and seal it for $45,000, well, do we want to do that? No.
Well, we probably should do something on it.
How about your thickness of Band-Aid, or you want to cure the disease, which I think we either fix it right, or don't even keep throwing money at it.
Well, how come you didn't talk up at that meeting, Todd?
Because it was a meeting for people who lived in the area to voice their concerns.
And, and.
And I was there to listen.
Yeah, okay.
You might have talked to those people for years, you probably do.
But, I'm, you know, the key thing is, you, you know, to keep doing nothing on that road is not the right answer.
Correct.
So, anyway, they do want us to bid asphalt, and I said, I thought that that was a good idea.
We can, let them bid it, let them bid it, let them bid it all day long, and then we'll get the bid for the concrete, we'll do both. You know, obviously, it's not apples to apples of a lot of people's eyes, I'm not a fan of asphalt either. If you're going to do concrete, do concrete. Yeah, we have some nasty winters here, and it buckles and does some very funky things. Let's just, let's see what they got put on paper, let's see what they say.
I think that you have to remember too, you know, asphalt will crack, and the new landals, when we went by driving around there, they have cracking concrete where their parts distribution building went up, and they've had to replace some of that already. So, and that's only been in there for five years.
That's been salted like, more than the city even salted.
I'm just saying.
Very salty.
I'm just saying. Anyway, I thought that we should, yes.
Another thing that came out of that meeting, when we were just talking about 13th Keystone and 11th Road, there were people that indicated they were kind of concerned, because they want to have assessments on the property owner, but the county's never given back the money they take from the people that live here in town into roads and bridges, their percentage.
I know, and we met.
That should be addressed, and maybe this county would come back and help a little bit, taking care of those roads.
Well, we met with the county today.
You did?
I did, I, I asked Jerry and Roberta T. Meyer to come, they were very vocal at the meeting, I asked David Zetterman, is that the right name, David Zetterman?
Yeah.
And also Lynn Rodabon, they were all people that were, spoke at the meeting. And so that I, at, when I went to the commissioners, I asked them if they would have a meeting with the same residents, so they could share at a night meeting, and we got almost to the point of booking it, and then all of a sudden, one of them says, well, I don't think this is going to change my mind, you know, and I was like, oh, no. So, what they did, they are struggling right now, number one, it's a new concept, they've never did a road, they did do a road share on North 11th Road, 80% KDOT monies, and then the city paid the balance, which was 20% plus, and, but, you know, they pointed out that this is new commissioners, you know, what, they, they specifically said, what's the difference, and he said, three new people sitting here. But what they did do, they didn't shut the door, they did, what they said is, we have a lot of water, that we need to see what happens, we have a lot of bridges, we need to see if they're sustainable. This is a bad year to come and try to discuss having some of it allocated to cities, but they said, come back in January. That means that it's kicked out of their 2020 budget, that's the bad thing about coming back January. But they have a lot of stuff on their plate right now, and the commissioners do, they have, they have their budget, they have, you know, obviously, a new county clerk.
Staffing issues.
Yeah, and, you know, and the, they're trying to figure out what kind of, what's happened to their roads and bridges because of the water.
Madam Mayor, one thing that people have to realize is that that, we got roads and bridges here in town, too, and some of that should come to the area that's in town that we're paying for.
I know that, and, and, I, I have to look at it as somewhat positive, because they had never, they haven't done it before, other than the North 11th Road, they haven't done it before, and, you know, Keith kept saying, if we can figure out a way to make it equitable enough, and so I will do whatever is necessary to split the cost out, and give them different options to consider, you know, like, what about this, or what about this, and, and they do want us to talk to the. And, and, uh, they do want us to talk to the township, so we'll probably need to at least sit down and talk to the township because they say those are township roads. So we need to have that conversation and there's no hurry because they don't want to say it's back till January. But all in all, I felt like the door, you know, the door wasn't shut. And, uh, we'll bring some options, nice, nice, different options in January and see if they'll. Also, you know, the CDBG money we might find, we could use for streets and get that going. So. That's all I got about that meeting.
Mayor?
Yes.
They said there's a crack in the concrete out there by, uh, CJ's too on the.
Concrete cracks? Just saying. But I don't know when we put that in. Anybody know when we put that in? Eleventh Road South Concrete Area?
I don't remember.
You don't remember?
Fourteen, about five years ago.
So what do you want us to do, Diane? Fix a crack? Have you seen it?
Well, I don't, I don't know. That's, that's what Gilbert, Gilbert Thorne told me the other night. He told me that, that there was a concrete there at the, a crack out there.
There is, there is a crack with one piece kind of shailing off a little.
You want to go look at it?
Run through there too.
See what we need to do?
Crack seal it.
Correct.
Seal it.
Worst case, there might be a little spot where that piece, I think, is trying to come loose. It might have to get cut out and just spot, spot repair.
Okay, so you'll look at that? Eleventh Road South entrance? Okay, any other thing for street? Water, wastewater? Parks and Rec, I saw we purchased the, like, the windows. When are they going to go in?
They were.
They're in? Yeah, Argo has them built, but we have the windows in? Has anybody been up there?
Yeah, they look good.
They look nice?
They had to replace some siding.
Some of it's painted. It looked good when it's all painted.
Okay. And, um, what's going on in City Park? What's that digging?
The, the built, around where the, uh, storm sewer, uh, overflows into the City Park was all built up. So there was pools.
Silt?
Yeah, 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 right around the, right around the, um, tubes. So they went in and cleared it out and now they're, uh, once, when it's dry, when it ever gets dry. Yes. Uh, they are basically smoothing it out, um, uh, to where the water can go somewhere.
Other than pooling near the tube?
Yes, and then reseating it.
So is somebody lining that or, you know, making the angle?
Yeah.
Who's, who's working on that?
Uh, Parks Crew.
And so, I guess they're used to figuring out how to keep the line?
And we have the tools to, to tell you where this is higher than this.
Okay, well, I was sitting there going, what are they doing? There's pretty substantial movement.
Yeah, somebody told me there have been people mudding in the park and we.
Or sell tickets then.
It was. It looked awful the other day.
Yeah, it looks pretty bad, but when it, it just needs to dry. Um, if it ever stops raining every once in a while.
Anybody else have Parks Rec? Cemetery and Airport, then the only thing was that airport taxiway wait limit. You'll find out from Olson. You guys have anything for Cemetery and Airport?
Oh, um, the beacon. I noticed the green light wasn't lit the other night. Are those two separate bulbs on that? I presume one for the green light and one for the beacon itself? I don't know. Maybe nobody's noticed or reported it yet.
Usually Rich will report stuff right away. Let me look. I, I'll check it.
Okay.
Okay, police and fire? Admin and finance? The only thing I wanted to say is I, you know, we give, uh, this bonus, aren't we giving bonuses to pool people that return? Aren't we giving a?
At the discretion of the manager and she said she would be looking at that pretty closely.
Yeah, a good, people, um, lifeguards or employees in good standing, yes.
Yeah, so my only thing is, so when we have these return people like at Parks and Cemetery?
No, it's, oh.
Seasonal, that come back?
No, it's not coming back. It's if they stay till the end of the year.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, so let's just take one of the mower people. And the mower people, once they know how to do it one year, they don't have to train them again the next year and the next year and the next year. It seems like they're pretty efficient. Seems like we should.
But is it long, is it at its core, is it longevity pay or is it incentive to complete the job?
Incentive, incentive to complete the job is what it was intended to do because we always, we had.
People leaving early.
People leaving early. So, and not being in good standing.
And it's a lower paying gig.
Yeah.
You guys don't think that's necessary for seasonal, returning seasonal?
And with every year, we've been giving, uh, a raise every year.
Yeah, half percent. They don't, they don't get any benefits though, but, okay. All right, if that's how you guys feel. Um, you guys have anything else on standing committees? On the, uh, on the appointments, the cemetery board is correct, but I have not heard from Bobby Price or Mike Blasky. So on the back page, I'm really just approving Bud Schute, Ralph, and Karen Hughes.
Wasn't Mike Blasky the one they fought for because he was out?
Yeah, but he hasn't returned my phone calls and I sent some, a couple emails to Sharon Kestner too. And Ralph said he would like to keep Mike Blasky on, so I'm waiting to hear. And Bobby Price, I didn't call them because Wayne was having all that stuff, that, those health issues, but I've left her a couple messages. So if not, if I don't hear back for the next meeting, I'll find someone else to.
We're going to do it without them, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so you want to approve the cemetery board as presented and Bud Schute on the Kestner Block Advisory Board and Ralph Ballon and Karen Hughes on the Kestner House Museum Advisory Board. That's what the appointments we're approving tonight.
Move to?
So moved? Is that what you were going to say? Is that what you were going to say? Are you a second there, Todd?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayo, all right. And Austin just said he wants to have an executive session.
For acquisition of property.
Do you know how long?
Uh, ten minutes.
Okay, so.
It'll always go back.
You got one.
So it's, um, it's going to be forty-three, nineteen, six, A-six, A, no, B-six. B-six. Preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property. Okay, so somebody want to read this, Todd? I know you do. Because you're right here. I have to go past.
B-six.
You said, I'm going to the city council recess into executive session pursuant to the, um, property acquisition exception under KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-six to discuss property acquisition. Uh, this executive session will include the mayor, the, uh, the city council and the city administrator. The executive session will begin at seven fifty-eight.
Nine fifty-eight.
Nine fifty-eight?
Sorry, nine fifty-eight. Long day. Nine fifty-eight, uh, will resume at ten oh-eight central.
Oh, you want ten minutes?
Yep. Let's make it ten-ten.
Ten-ten?
Just to.
Which is twelve minutes because I can do math.
Ten-ten, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll call the meeting back to order. There are more, no binding decisions made during executive session. And so we are going to continue on to roundtable. The only thing I have is on seven twenty-three, which is a Tuesday, there's going to be a regional Kansas Mayors Association meeting here at Empty Cup. And, um, we have no idea how many people are going to be there, if it's five, twenty or forty. But, um, once we get closer to it, then we'll have a head count. But I was hoping we could do something for Marysville. I, I figured I'm going to hand out like the black squirrel maps for the hunt and see if Michelle Weitzel has some kind of goodie bags to hand out. But I was also wondering if we could do some type of favors to ma- we could either do like a small raffle and have like five or six favors or we could do a little favor for everyone. You guys approve something like up to maybe fifty bucks for favors and we'll hand them out. We'll, um, buy something to, I was thinking black squirrels for Marysville. I would, could do a couple Pony Express and a couple black squirrel things. Just as a raffle. You want to wait? I mean, how do you feel about that? Are you okay with it? Fifty bucks?
Fifty bucks.
See what I can get for favors? Do you think I need to give every single person that comes one or just?
Well, they should.
Yeah, I would say.
But if you end up with forty people there in a five-dollar mug.
Well, I don't think I'm going to be a five-dollar mug, but I, you know, um.
Are they spending the night or are they?
No, but they're all coming, they're all from, the, the thing about it is it is northeast Kansas. So these are people that actually might come back to Marysville. I look at it as a good opportunity. And that's why I chose Empty Cup. They were on Main Street. Hopefully encourage people to shop a little bit on Main Street, see what our Main Street's like. And, um, so do you guys want me to wait and tell you how many, a closer number or do you want to approve? Or do you, I mean, even if you do like a favor, the lowest favor would probably be like three dollars. They have those little, um, squirrel decorations that, um, Sue Lamacca made.
Why does she charge for those?
Well, she said they, they, she said they were four dollars each, but if we order a lot, she would discount the price. Um, you know, the other thing is that little black squirrel coffee, that small one. Another thing is, um, they have a cookie cutter, black squirrel cookie cutter. Or I wouldn't mind maybe set an amount so that it'd be alternate squirrel, Pony Express squirrel, you know, so that.
Around the table.
Yeah. So, um, you know, maybe I can just find a favor for three dollars a person. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
And, okay. Well, I'll tell you more as I find out how many people are coming, all right? So if you guys are available, it's, uh, it's fifteen dollars a person.
Might check with RX too and see. They have some cute little favors there too sometimes. You might see if they have anything there.
Yeah, where we might, you know, we could even do it different ones, showing different options of black squirrels, different options.
Or and maybe put like where they're from on there. So if you get a mug from RX or something, maybe next person over there might want to go crack one.
True, true. Just put a little tag to say purchased at so they know. That's a good point. So I'll just try to find something three dollars a person, let you know how many people are coming, remind you to come on the twenty-third if you want to come.
What day is that? What day of the week is that?
It's Tuesday. So I reserve the room from eleven-thirty to one-thirty. There's no cost to the room because KMA pays for all the mayor's lunches. So as long as we spend seventy-five dollars, there's no room charge. So, and we won't have a meeting unless there's at least five mayors, so we should be fine there. So there won't be any room charge. So the only charge the city should be the favors given out. Or if you guys want to go, I mean, like I said, it's just fifteen dollars each, but there's no travel costs. So if you want to go, you should go. All right, you guys all okay with three dollars now here or yes?
Yes.
Okay. Consensus of council. That's all I have. Darlene?
Hello, just a reminder for the city fireworks, July the fifth.
And July the fourth, at Landals Hangers, right? That's, that's going to be until, before we are next meeting. So the fourth, the big Fourth of July extravaganza and then fireworks again. All right, anything else?
No.
All right, Bobby? Gina?
No.
Terry?
Uh, I have one thing and that pertains to, I know we have a burning at the dump today. And that's good because it makes a lot of room, but it'd really be nice if there's little city vehicles out there that they could kind of pick up all the brush and stuff when people are trying to clean up and make it look a little nicer in the entryway of the dump. There's brush piles on both sides of the road all the way up there. They ought to be cleaned up. That's the only thing I have to say.
Entry of the dump cleaned up. Are these branches that, um, fell off vehicles or are they just overgrowth of the road?
Right by the old shooting range, all the way up the road there. You can see piles of limbs land and it's just that nobody's just stuck a tractor bucket in there and hauled them up to the pile.
Okay. All right, well, we have a tractor out there.
I know. That's why I was mentioning, maybe it'd be nice if they did.[1783.21]